Welcome, everyone. I now call this meeting in some of the city council to order. In accordance with Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, this meeting of the City Council may be conducted via remote participation. Please note that video and audio recording of this meeting is being recorded and may be shown live on local access government channels and on the City of Somerville website, and will be available for future review. Will the clerk please call the roll?
This is Roll Call. Counselor McLaughlin.
Here.
Counselor Davis.
Here.
Counselor Scott.
Present.
Counselor Strezzo.
Here.
Counselor Klingon.
Present.
Counselor Wilson.
Present.
Counselor Burnley.
Present.
Counselor Gomez-Milcada.
Present.
Counselor Kelly.
Present.
Counselor Panetta-Nufeld.
Present.
Counselor Ewan Campan. With 10 counselors present and one absent, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Pursuant to our Rule 31, let it be known that the City Council salutes the flag of the United States of America and let us recall our oath to uphold the Constitution and the laws of the Commonwealth to the best of our abilities and understanding. We'll begin this meeting with a moment of silence, and I'll ask if any counselors wish to remember members of our community. Counselor McLaughlin.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to recognize a man who passed away in my community. He was an unhoused individual, so died tragically of an overdose at the age of 58. I'm going to choose to not mention the person's name out of respect for the family, but I wanted to recognize this as continuing part of the problem across America, but in Somerville. And my thoughts go out to his family. He passed away about a block away from my house, and I want his family to know that we're all thinking of him and that every life has meaning. Unfortunately, because his life is gone, it will be up to the rest of us to determine what the meaning of his life is.
Any other moments of silence? Will all those able to please rise for a moment of silence? Okay, you can be seated. All right. We have a few items to take out of order this evening. We will start with our public hearings, followed by Item 7.4, and then 8.1, and then to the regular items in our agenda. So with that, Madam Clerk, can we move to the minutes?
Yes. The next item is Item 1.3, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of October 26, 2023.
That's approved.
Item 3.1 is a grant of location from Eversource to install 26 feet of conduit in Eastman Road from utility pole 106 over 5 to a point of pickup at 21 Eastman Road.
I declare this public hearing open. Is there anyone wishing to speak?
Jackie Duffy.
Jackie Duffy.
How are you tonight? Hello, can you hear me?
Great, yes, we're great.
Enstar Electric would like to install approximately 26 feet of conduit in Eastman Road. The work is necessary to provide underground electrical service to 21 Eastman Road.
No more hands. Any counselors wishes to speak on this? Counselor Gomez-Milcada.
My usual. This is in my word. I ask for beautiful patching, and after the patching's done, whatever additional work has to be done, it's follow it up, please. Thank you.
Sure.
Did you hear that, Jackie?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
All right. Any other counselors? Okay, to close, public hearing closed. Next item. This item's approved.
Item 3.2 is a grant of location from Eversource to install 56 feet of conduit in North Street from utility pole 190 over 4 to a point of pickup at 24 North Street.
Is there anyone here to speak? Jackie Duffy.
How are you? Enstar Electric would like to install approximately 56 feet of conduit in North Street to provide electric service to 24 North Street.
No more hands.
No more hands. Any counselors here to speak on it? Okay, declare this public hearing closed, and this item's approved.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Item 3.3 is an officer's communication from the chief assessor presenting proposed fiscal year 2024 tax classifications and requesting the adoption of a minimum residential factor for fiscal 2024 and acceptance of MGL Chapter 59, Section 5(c), a residential exemption of 35% of average assessed value for owner-occupied properties.
Wonderful. We have Chief Assessor Golden here to present, so I declare this public hearing open. Assessor Golden.
Madam Chair, through you, Francis Golden, Chief Assessor, Chairman of the Board of Assessors. Tonight, I bring forward two motions before you, as they were just stated. I think the important thing to understand about the recommendation for the minimum residential factor is we've approved a 1.75 shift for 17 years, if it's approved tonight. The other motion before you is the residential exemption, which is 35% residential exemption, which is the highest in the state with the exception of Boston, and this would be the 10th year that would be at 35%. A home rule petition would be the only way that we'd be able to raise the 35 to 40. There's been conversations. The board is totally on board with the Honorable Counsel if they choose to do so in the future. When we shift, just so the community and everyone understands, you're basically taking a billion-dollar tax base of $198 million and you're shifting it down to 164 for our residential class. And this increases the commercial tax base from roughly $46 million to $80 million. One thing that everyone needs to understand about that shift is it's 1.75 to the commercial base itself. So this year, from '23 to '24, the commercial base grew $6,856,008 in base, which was a 24.8% increase from a year ago, which is phenomenal commercial growth within the community. So that's something we've been waiting for that's going to continue to happen, and the timing couldn't be better because our residential base is stabilizing a bit in growth. If we move on to Slide 3, you can kind of see the comparison from the State Form LA4, which is the totals of our uses from single-family all the way down to the personal property. Some of the key changes is we've added 221 residential condo units. We have 29 fewer 2 families and 14 fewer 3 families. These multi-families, the 2 families and the 3 families that you'll see on Slide 4, they give birth to the condos. So if you're a 2 family and you convert it to 2 units, we lose the 2 family, we gain 2 condo units. If you're a 3 family, we lose the 3, we gain 3 condo units. If it's a brand-new big box, we may gain 64 new units where there was once a commercial property or whatever various use gave up that space. If we look at Slide 4 and we see the average valuation changes, you can kind of see what's going on with the growth. Residential slowing, like I said. Growth-only, market growth. One of the most common questions is, with especially personal property, is how can the value go down and the growth go up? Well, property depreciates, and we have different scales for different kinds of commercial businesses. And each year, that depreciation schedule's applied to that particular item, and most things are depreciating to dust. A lot of the commercial industrial scales are just five years because they consider the computers and things used in the active business as their life's up after five years. We, as assessors, don't agree with that. We feel that the life's a little greater, so there is competition there, and that's why this year, we hired an auditor in the community who went out and visited 40 or so properties with full-fledged inspections. This changed our growth in personal property from about $1.2 million to $2.8 million. So this was a win-win for the community, and our growth grew about 119% from a year ago. Without getting into this gentleman's name, he's excellent. He was recommended throughout the state. He's done this for a lot of communities, but specifically our lab office. He went in and audited their personal property. As we move on to the neighborhoods, Slide 6, I believe through 9 touches on our single-family uses, single-family homes, 2 families, 3 families, and condominiums. Our single families showed the greatest appreciation from last year at 4.95%. People want to live in single-family homes in Somerville. We only had 64 sales. Within the neighborhoods, we saw various different areas of appreciation from as low as 3% all the way to 6%, but that was the one use where people were paying more to purchase property. If we move on to Slide 7, the 2 families, 2.3% increase overall. It's slowing. I've been here six years. We've seen these 2s and 3 markets never collapse. They're strong. But when I first got here, they were 12% or 13% a year increases. Lots of different factors. The green line, being close to work, whatever it may be that people wanted to be here, they wanted to be here. Or they wanted that income stream. Or they wanted to turn that property into condos. Whatever it was that was the driving force, I caught that. It's slowing. 3s, under 1% increase. I think we've kind of caught up with them in terms of market data. They're still selling for a very competitive price. It's just not. It's kind of hit the ceiling. Condos, 1.92%. Healthy numbers. But again, our residential class is stabilizing a bit, and our commercial and personal property, thank goodness, has really exploded. Any questions on any particular use in any particular neighborhood? The FY '24 growth, as I just mentioned, is solely fueled by lab office and personal property this year. The numbers are slightly up, single-family, down condo, 2-family, 3-family. I mean, these are all healthy numbers. I'm not concerned, but conservative compared to what we have been dealing with. Apartments, 4 units plus, that'll bring in the big 290 revolution. That'll bring in your big apartment buildings. That is just stabilized. It's open. It's 100%. That's what drives that 163 in value that you're seeing there. It's lab office really going from $477 million to $683 million. We have nine buildings at different... Two have stabilized. Seven are still going. As everyone knows, we're recessing a bit in that use, and we've revalued these three times since May so that the city is in a good position moving forward, and we're not vulnerable in any way. Our expert came in in May, came in in August, came back in in November. If these buildings are worth a certain dollar figure on the street at 100%, the city holds a line of about 80%. No lab office building at these values has been tried at the appellate tax board, so you have to be very careful when you get into these areas of 6 and 7 and $800 million a building. If a building does not have tenants, it would probably sailing out at about 60%. That tenant fit-up would be captured later if they cannot secure a tenant. You cannot build lab office in the city now without a tenant secured. They won't approve it. We have a couple of different projects that are going on, but they've been stalled because we have a very high vacancy rate on probably five of the seven that are going up right in front of your eyes. So I just would like the council to know that the board is on top of this, and I feel very good about where we are and what we're committing and how we'll handle this situation so we don't hurt them either as developers in our city. Any questions on the growth? This is the highest number in the history of the city. Will it drop next year? Yes, it will.
Assessor Golden. We do have a question from Counselor Gomez-Milcada.
Yeah, so I just want to clarify. For the lab office buildings, anything that's in planning right now, you're saying if there's no tenant, you're not allowing it to... You're not permitting it. Is that correct?
That's what I've been told.
Okay. But anything that's under construction right now, it could be that they're under construction, but they're not tenant-secured. Because my understanding, there's a couple of buildings going up that are not tenant-secured.
There's more than a couple.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
There's a couple that have tenants and are full and are very healthy and going forward, and they're long-term leases. Some is one. We're working with these developers closely and making sure that we're in a good place.
But... Sorry, through the chair. But for clarification, we've only done this with projects currently in planning. There could be, as I said, projects out there under construction that don't have a tenant secured.
Much like Cambridge and South Boston and all our surrounding neighbors that are going through kind of the same thing. I think they're all kind of putting the same guidelines in place.
Thank you.
Counselor Davis.
Hi, thank you. Just a clarification, frankly. I think repeating the question with the good counsel for more advice. I just want to make sure I fully understand. So did I hear correctly that the city is not issuing a permit to move forward on a construction of a building unless there is a tenant identified?
The market... Well, the city does not want another building without a tenant-secured agreement because it's very dangerous to move forward.
Through the President, I think... No, I understand the logic. I just want to make sure I understand that it's not... Through the President, when you first were talking about, you know, they're not letting them go forward, I assumed that was the financing, the banks, and whatever. But this is actually the city is saying, no...
Well, it's... I don't want to... Through you, Madam Chair, I don't want to put words in anyone's mouth. I'm just telling you at this moment in time, we are recessing in that use, and we are very concerned with allowing a building to go up without any tenant in place until this recession is over, which I'm being told is 12 to 24 more months, which is significant.
Through the President, I apologize for being... Maybe I'm not being too serious. I just... I'm still not sure I'd know the answer to my yes-or-no question. I'm not trying to put you on the spot. I just really want to understand whether it's... Is it we're going to have conversations and encouraging and sort of suggesting, or is it we're literally saying you can't build until there's a tenant?
Well, Madam Chair, through you, I think that should probably come from Mr. Galligani and not Mr. Golden, but that is my understanding of what's happening at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Wilson, then Counselor Klingon, Counselor Scott.
Through the President. Just for the public, could you talk a little... This is a question I've gotten from a number of constituents. Just the timeline for... So there's a lot of construction clearly happening in the city. A lot of things are coming online, residential and commercial industrial. What does the timeline look like, then, from when a new thing gets built, it gets certified, you know, gets finished out, gets a certificate of occupancy? When does that, then, get reflected in the assessed value of that? Is that... Are we stuck waiting for the... Basically, the new year, the FY '25? Or can that happen mid-year?
Madam Chair, through you, anything that's going up currently will move forward. So if you are at 22% as of June 30, my feeling is you'll be in the 40s somewhere next June 30. When it'll be capped is when it gets to be weather-tight at 60% and there's no tenant because the tenant does the fit-up to occupy the space, which is dangerous. You have to be very careful what you do when there's no tenant and how you treat that taxpayer because they will file appeals against the assessors' office, and they will come in and they will argue every line from vacancy to no rent to cap rates. We are hoping that over the next 12 to 24 months that we will come out of this situation. But it's a serious dilemma for this entire area right now, and we're not alone. Everybody seems to be holding lab office buildings that are almost weather-tight without tenants.
Through the President, you touched on my concern there, which is basically the potential success of appeals against assessments in terms of pleading vacancy. And could you just talk about what that looks like and the impact on us and the concern? Just for the... Again, for the public watching, so they understand.
Madam Chair, through you, I am not concerned at the moment with any appeal on a lab office in the city because we do our due diligence to make sure that our values are very sound moving forward based on the assessment period. We have an overlay. We are prepared. But the room for where they feel it's worth and where we feel it's worth, I believe, is not a great margin at this moment.
How's that, Counselor? Okay, Counselor Klingon.
Thank you, Ms. Madam President. Through you, to Director Golden. But just to put a number on it, Director Golden, you said five out of the seven buildings right now that are already in some phase of construction are tenantless. Is that correct?
In some shape or form, yes. Some, no tenants. But we are early in the process. You're going from a piece of land to a 20% complete building to a 45% complete building. It moves over time. In a perfect world, you should be able to build one of these buildings in roughly three years. Because of COVID, COVID, we got into a four-year just because the crews couldn't do what they normally do at the speed they would normally go at. So we're very careful, but I think you're going to have some buildings weather-tight in two years that hopefully will catch this use coming back online with healthy tenant... Tenants occupying the space. If not, we won't be alone, but we'll be prepared, and we'll have healthy values on there that I don't think will make us vulnerable in any way because we're on top of it.
Last question, through you, Madam President. But just to get to Counselor Wilson's point, like for the public, that they see the buildings going up. They don't understand that we're taxing them at a rate, at a certain percentage based on where they are in the building's life and occupancy and so on. Is that...
That's correct.
Okay. Just so people understand that, you know, when they see these buildings, it's not like we're just raking in all that cash. There's a lot of factors that go into it. So... Thank you.
101 South is a perfect example of a very healthy building that has complete occupancy with long-term leases. Very healthy. That's a home run. That's perfect. There's... They're not alone. Cambridge Crossing, those buildings are very healthy. We have one tenant, another building, without really getting into all the details, but we have the pulse of those buildings in the city's best interest.
Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Madam President. I appreciate you mentioning 101 South. It is a great building, great tenants. I might have missed it. Why does it say "under construction" on the slide here?
Yeah, it's just punch. It's what I call punchless. There might be something that's... For instance, Cambridge Crossing has a building that's complete, but two floors are still vacant. So there must be something that's...
I'm pretty sure they're all done on that one.
101 South is at a very healthy, competitive place. That could... I mean, to me, they're 100%.
Yeah, it's just...
They just refinanced the...
There's other ones nearby, don't you? Yeah.
Yeah.
No, there's like four of them in the neighborhood, Counselor. All right. And I guess my only other point would be I was surprised, I think as many of my colleagues were, to hear about some state of policy by the Planning Department to prevent applications from moving forward without certain assurances of tenancy. I feel confident that while they might be discouraging projects, I'm sure nobody's being deprived of their legal authority to apply for a project, to apply for approvals based on a policy decision of the Planning Department, and I'm sure we could get clearer conversations about that policy with the Planning Department that I'm sure for members of the public and any future courts, that you were just expressing your appreciation for the goal of the city to be more conservative in terms of commercial construction without tenancies. Does that ring true, sir?
Yes.
All right, wonderful. Thank you. Madam President, I'm all good.
Any other questions? Okay. Assessor Golden, you can keep moving on.
The major contributors, obviously, were up on the screen. As we move on to the FY '24 tax levy and classification, it's important that everyone understands that we start at the FY '23 levy limit. You can see how much smaller the 2.5% is in comparison to our growth and how that totals into our FY '24 levy limit. The debt exclusion for the high school is even greater than 2.5. We have our maximum allowable levy, and we have our estimated tax levy. In a perfect world, you'd like the tax rate to the excess levy capacity and leave no money on the table, but the money is not lost. It's a part of the starting point for the next year. Occasionally, there's a chance that the commercial rate will go up a penny or the residential will go up a penny to have less excess levy capacity in any given year. The FY '24 percent and change is 10.44 from last year. You can see what the commercial levy is of that whole and the residential levy is of that whole. As we move on to the Slide 13, the tax levy share.
Apologies. Assessor Golden, can we take a question here?
Sure.
Counselor Wilson.
Thanks, Madam President. Again, just for the public, could you talk a little about the 175% classification on the previous slide and just explain that for the public watching here? We just get a lot of questions about this, and it's really helpful to have this as a resource we can point the public to.
Okay. Madam Chair, through you, at the beginning of the presentation, I talked about the percentage of the residential value and the commercial value. And when we have a 1.75 shift, what basically happens is the commercial gets increased to 32.8% of the levy, and the residential's reduced to 67.11%. to 32.8% of the levy and the residential's reduced to 67.11%. And that's what causes the shift of the burden onto the commercial, which is the burden upon itself based on its own value. It can go up 1.75%. This is the greatest amount of money that's ever been shifted on to the commercial industrial personal property because it grew the most that it ever had in a single year.
Madam President, through you, so what the public is hearing here then is this drive that we have to shift over to commercial, we're limited how much we can do that each year by the state.
Madam Chair, through you, no, the commercial industrial personal property can only take on more if its own base grows. What's happening right now is the commercial industrial personal property is growing at an alarming rate because most of the growth in the community is commercial and personal property. So a larger amount of tax dollars can move from residential to commercial industrial personal property. In the beginning, I said that the... It went up 24.8% from last year. That's alarming. And if you look at this grid, we've been waiting a long time for this to happen, but if you look at the pie share on 13, you can see that the commercial went from 22.21 to And the reason why I brought up, well, why would the personal property go down if we had 2.8 million in new growth is it's because the assets depreciate in these settings, if that helps you understand. But our residential base through the shift process went from 70.85 to 67.11. It's, when we look at the community comparison, everyone's like, geez, why do we pay so much in taxes in Somerville? We are not a lot like Boston or Waltham or Cambridge. Their tax base before they shift is far greater than ours. They can pass so much more value on that it helps their constituents pay less. That's what, I hope that answers the question.
Counselor Wilson.
Thanks. Through you, Madam President. Yeah, I guess what I'm looking for here is just, someone's going to look at, they're going to say, well, after the shift, the 175%, right? It looks like almost a, goes to like a two to one ratio, but we're setting the minimum residential factor at 82.6433. And people are, this all comes up because, in the past, the public has been told, we're doing all this commercial growth and it's going to hold your taxes level, or in some cases, people have been, people heard or understand it's going to actually reduce their residential taxes here. And that's clearly not happened because, you know, things have grown. And I just get a lot of questions about this. We got it last time about, you know, we all, I'm sure, I don't want to speak for my colleagues, there's a lot of, lot of questions about that. And I guess what I'm looking for is just, my understanding is we're limited how much we can shift that, even though we've had all this, this growth on commercial, and a year-on-year basis, we can't just do a giant shift. It has to be, it's capped how much you can shift that year, each year. Correct?
Correct.
Thank you for that.
I have a question from Counselor Goldman-McCud.
I had a similar question, but I would confess it's not for constituents, it's for my clarification. Thank you.
All right, Assessor Golden, we can move on.
Slide 14, option one would be with no res X. Obviously, we're long past that and you can kind of see that for the uses, the taxes would be far greater. We have a $2.1 million break-even point in the city. So the only homeowners that pay more in tax dollars because of the res X is a property that's valued higher than 2.1 million. If you're one of the lower, say you own a one-bedroom condo, you are rarely benefiting from the residential exemption. But someone in a $1.8 million property is benefiting as well, but greater than two-one. And just so everyone understands, it's the average of the residential class that drives the residential exemption. The average value for the residential class only went up 7,000 in reflection of the 35% of our average in the city. So it's, I think, one of the big things you have to understand is when our residential values don't appreciate like they have, it falls on the, excuse me, it falls on the residential rate. That's, that's where the value goes. It's a scale. So our tax rate went from 1034 to 1052 because the residential base didn't appreciate like it had, so it showed up in the rate, if that helps you understand how that scale works. Typically, we've been driven by residential. Now that shifted to commercial. So the 18 cents that we're experiencing in the increase is because the rate absorbed more of the increase than the value. If we had a little bit healthier value appreciation within the residential class, the rate would be lower in, I'm sure all the councilors would be more happy with me, but that isn't what's happening. I'm governed by local assessment to do this in a, in a very firm statistical way and that's what's happening right now, is an 18 cent increase. If we move on to classification, no res X, it's better. It's a less burden of tax, but it's not like having the res X as a part of the equation. Once you bring in the res X, yes, it raises the tax rate. Yes, it's classification within the residential class. $3.5 billion is a lot of money to drop back into the rate to allow the community to have this exemption, but at the same time, it helps the majority pay less in taxes. It does not affect the commercial. It's a classification within the residential class. If you live in your property and you fill out the paperwork, you receive the residential exemption, which is $4,053.64 off your taxes. 385,327 subtracted right off the top. That is the board's recommendation before the Honorable Counsel tonight. That has been what's been approved for 17 consecutive years. When we look at the FY '24 tax impact on slide 17, we do a couple different things. We show you the estimated tax rates that we believe will be the tax rates within a penny. Again, there's your residential exemption on the far right at 385,327, and then you can see the average values on the right going down. We show you the debt exclusion by itself. We show you what the taxes are with the debt exclusion without the res X. And then on the bottom, left to right, you have the 24 experience, the 23 experience and the 22 experience per use, single-family condominium, two-family, three-family and four-to-eight unit. There's not much you can do when you have 2.5 and a debt exclusion. But I don't think we trade the high school for anything. Beautiful building, necessary. There's probably more schools in the future. This is how these things are absorbed over time within the community. If anyone in the public wants to know what their impact of the debt exclusion is, that expression will get you there, the .027352, once you subtract the residential exemption if you live in your home, whatever style that may be.
There's a question from Counselor Cleon.
Can I just ask a question through you, Madam President? I don't want to get into a whole thing, but Director Golden, just so I understand, because in years past, it's been explained to us that based on those zones and like based on what homes are going for is, is what people's home is assessed for in terms of the taxes they pay. So like the first year I was on, like 10 Hills was like, the taxes dropped by 1%. And now, single-family homes are hot, so the taxes are going to go up by, through you, Madam President, I think it said 6% or something like that. I'm just trying to figure, what's the average increase to a homeowner in, say, 10 Hills, just to use an example because it's like such an island, from, from last year to this year?
10 Hills, Madam Chair, through you, 10 Hills for a single-family?
Yeah.
In '23, the average value in 10 Hills was 845,262. This year, the average value is 896,159. It's a 6% increase. And it's funny that you bring up 10 Hills because I was criticized in my first to second year, the 10 Hills didn't go up at all.
It went down by 1%.
Yeah, so it's, that's probably because there wasn't a 101 sale and it, good assessing is to apply an average increase to all the neighborhoods, believe it or not, when there isn't a sale within the neighborhood. But what we look for through the abatement process is when anyone in any neighborhood has an issue with that line and they come in and they say, geez, I'm really confused. 10 Hills is kind of isolated. But we have a lot of questions where people come in and say, that's one street over, what do you mean they're in another neighborhood? Why are they applied to different factors? And we're constantly always looking in a good market situation. Neighborhoods may grow. They may jump a street. They may jump more than a street. But you inherit these things when you come in as assessor and if I remember right, I think Counselor Scott and I had a lengthy conversation about that sort of thing before. And it is difficult and I do think you're right, there are situations where they expand and they shrink, but it probably is because there was some single-family activity in 10 Hills that I'd be more than happy to share with you and that's my job. And I look at the, we only had 64 single-family sales in the city out of 2,300 properties. It's, it's funny, like, I'm used to assessing in communities where there's 60 sales in a neighborhood. So to have that few and then to have people come in that are willing to overpay to live in that house and change that house dramatically, it's, it's hard, it's the hardest use in the city right now to appraise or assess is the single-family. We have single-family homes selling for $3 million, 2.8, 2.6. It's, it's alarming what's going on out there. But again, all your constituents should come forward and have an inspection and not be afraid of the assessors. We're only as good as the data we have. But that's, yes, you're higher than the average. The average was 4.95. You're at 6.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Like, again, I'm not, I just want a clarification on it so people understand if there's like a jump. That was helpful, thank you.
Back to you, Assessor Golden, anymore?
Just the community comparisons, kind of the slide 18, that's, I think the most important thing, and I brought this up earlier, if you look at the commercial industrial personal property levy share and then you look at where we're at, it's very hard for you to say that we're anything like any of these communities, with the exception of Watertown and we're lower than Watertown. I mean, those percentages are through the roof. Think about passing on how much residential value they can pass on to the base in those, in Boston, in Cambridge, in Waltham. It's just so much different than us hoping that our commercial base just keeps growing and growing and growing and we can pass more and more and more. Madam Chair, through you, that's all I have for tonight. If anyone has another question, I'll...
Clarify, one quick question for me.
Counselor Goldman-McCud, one moment. We've Counselor Kelly first and then Counselor Goldman-McCud.
Through the Chair, thanks so much, Assessor, for being with us tonight and presenting all of this very thorough information. My last question, it just has to do with this slide in terms of exemptions. You had a colleague, I'm blanking on her name, who joined you last year and spoke in depth about reaching constituents who qualify for these exemptions and the real struggles that she was going through to get in touch with some of these folks who, who could qualify for some pretty serious tax exemptions. Could you just talk a little bit about how you've been able to reach those folks in this past fiscal year and if you saw any improvement between FY '22 and FY '23?
Madam Chair, through you, Yannika Donovan is here tonight with me. She is the new deputy assessor and I'll let her answer this directly. She handles all the exemptions.
I couldn't see you behind him. Welcome. Thanks so much for being with us tonight.
Through you, Madam Chair. So it's been kind of the same. Like, like I said, last year, we have two elderly exemptions and the people that take, that use that, it's kind of similar to the year before. Also, there are state limits to that exemption, so they're not really high. We do give a 25% discount on water bills as well with them. The asset limits and the income limits are set by the state, so that kind of limits us. So what we try to promote is the deferral. Unfortunately, this still didn't grow really much. We still see people, they're reluctant to use it. So it did wind up a tiny little bit, but you see that some people, you know, that transfer or pass away, you know, they don't, they, they stop with that. But then we get new applicants, but we're still on an average like around eight or nine applicants per year. It was kind of sad. But yeah, we see that elderly people still really are reluctant to have us put a lien on their house, although we guarantee low interest of 2.5% and the income is 86%, 86,000 a year, the income limit, so it's a good chance for them. There's no asset limit on that, but it still hasn't improved.
And through the Chair, just to clarify, there's no cap on how many people can apply for this exemption, correct?
No, not for the deferral, no, because it's not really an exemption, because the city is still guaranteed to get that eventually.
Right, with the lien.
With, on a low interest. And it just frees up the income of those people.
Right. Thank you for that. Please continue to come back to the council, I mean, maybe mid, mid-year assessor and deputy assessor, if that's something that y'all could do and just update us on how many exemptions have been applied for. You know, I think all of us, Ward and at-large councilors, have heard about how folks' water bills are really hitting them this year with the water rates increasing. And so we, we understand that folks are feeling really squeezed right now and so whatever we can do to help advocate for, you know, particularly these veterans, elderly folks, disabled folks, to get these exemptions so that they can have more money in their pocket to live, just use us as a platform for that, because I think eight is too low. It's not enough people applying for the exemptions.
Yeah, exactly. If you see any constituents that have trouble with that and you think they might qualify, please send them our way.
Definitely.
We really appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you for that. I have no more questions.
Thank you.
Counselor Goldman-McCud.
Can you explain to me, because I'm in Ward 5, which is, probably has a pretty high concentration of conversion of two, three-family to condos? What I'm seeing is you'll have a two-family in good shape and it'll be assessed as, say, a 1.2. The same, slightly equal square footage condo across the street, when you add up the value of the two condos, you're at 2.3, 2.5 million. What, obviously, there's some finishes and upgrades, but that's like a million dollar. Why the, in the end, property's property, the cost to build it is, you know, the basic structure is the same, as we're talking finishes, and why is that discrepancy so high? Because I think that's driving up a property cost as well and taking, my theory is, it's driving up the property cost. Only a private developer can buy a two-family. It used to be, there was a time where you can buy a two-family, rent out. And then you're, you're going in this continuous conundrum of very, you know, luxury condos, let's call it that, going on. So what, what drives that difference in assessment?
To be honest, I find that the developers will pay if the return is worth paying the higher number. We still have two-family sales and I see a lot of them where I look at, I go inside all of them because the MLS is phenomenal, but some of them will just straight up sell and they're average and someone will go in and live there and rent. It's not as common. It's not as common. There is a market that's outside of MLS in the city that I'm sure everybody's aware of, and it's the Werder-Muff market. And a lot of those properties sell to these developers who are Somerville guys, who have the inside track. And although the council has slowed, in my opinion, the conversion numbers dramatically, when I, I mean, I was doing over 300 units a year. Now we're down around 200, 220. It has slowed because of the respect to the tenants and how quickly they have to leave the property. I think that was a good guideline to slow that process. But in terms of your sales price is what drives what I can do and not do, and we're really on top of these permits. So the discrepancies in terms of whether somebody does C-plus work or B-plus work, that's really driven by what building sends to us on what's being done. And then we go a step further where we may get inside, we may not. But the interior opinion of what was done in that unit is what would really drive what the difference would be. It can be something as simple as a $50,000 kitchen or a $200,000 kitchen permit pulled. That could drive it considerably. They gut most of these right to the studs if it's a developer. If it's not that extensive, it's still very nice, but they may not go to that extreme. And that's why I think we take a lot of properties from 100% to 60%, because they may be a shell when we go in in May, and they actually will have people living in those properties by Christmas. That's how quick they are. And we don't catch up with them until the spring, because we're bound, but we're a 653 community. As of June 30th, we have to put a number on that property. And these guys have crews, and within 120 days, they could have finished units with people living in them live. And we don't catch up till the next year. So it would depend on the situation. If you pointed to them, and I could look at them, I could tell you exactly, because we have a team now. We break them out, and there's three of us. So it's, really depends on the situation, who's involved, and all the work's usually very, very nice, so it's just, no one's building anything that's not nice in Somerville, I find.
Through you, Madam President. I mean, I'm sort of in the construction industry. To me, the values on the location, the property, and the finishes, I would disagree with some of the things we see. There's something in construction behind me, and my husband is about to have a heart attack. He doesn't feel it's, so that's where I'm a little confused, because it's better, it's newer, but necessarily, if I look at the lifespan of what's been done, I'm seeing some properties heavily deteriorating, seven to eight years out because of the quality of the construction. So I'm just curious how is assessment, but that's a class, so I won't keep anybody here. But it's a, it's, yeah, I'm kind of perplexed about how that happens. Thank you.
Counselor Klingon.
Thank you, Madam President. Through you. I just have one more specific question about, it kind of speaks to units. Through you to Director Golden. So, you know, when we passed the new zoning a few years ago, I know why I voted for the, sort of, the third unit being affordable was twofold. When we get an affordable unit, too, we would hopefully make it so that, you know, the value wouldn't be such to a developer's that they would be able to, that they would continually outbid the average person who wanted to try to compete and buy a home. So the question is, have you seen, so the, so the sale of either, the three families, which, I'm sorry, the two families, which, the creation of three families has, I would say, sunk dramatically with the way, as far as the zoning that we passed?
Madam Chair, through you. I feel that we're losing twos and threes. Twos a lot faster than threes, but I wouldn't rule out someone actually building a three. But I agree, it's not typical that there's a three, three families going up. Don't see a lot of that, although it does happen.
So I guess what I'm getting at, last question, Madam President, through you, is when you do like your projected growth in, you know, in terms of assessing like the value of a potential home, whether, you know, if it's two, whether it can become three units, do you project, are you projecting any growth based on the fact that we're about to repeal that, about to make three, three units by right again? Has that factored into your assessing at all?
No. No, it's really, what would drive our values is just how the software values, whatever it may be, that we're taking from nothing to something. It's not, that wouldn't play into it, no, we don't. Although I feel that most, you know, the zoning that comes across our desks are all in good intentions for what's going on in the city. I've seen it commercially, residentially, you know, one out of every eight affordable. Like, everything that's happening is in the best interest of the city, so.
Thank you.
Other questions? So this is the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience here to speak or have questions? Anyone online? Madam Clerk?
I don't see any hands. I'm going to step into the race. I have Crystal Huff.
Okay.
Okay, how terrible is the echo right now?
It's fine.
Okay, great. Yeah, so my, my family is hoping to do renovation in order to address inaccessibility.
I'm sorry, can you introduce yourself?
Oh, sorry, this is Crystal Huff. I'm over in Ward 5. And I'm, I'm trying to figure out if we can afford to do it, and if so, how to do it, because it might change like a lot of things to try to put in an elevator so that our house is accessible. And that is a huge thing with huge expense, and so a lot of moving pieces. And I'm just trying to understand how, like, when we're trying to do this in order to make our house accessible, like, is that something that ever gets taken into account with how we're taxed? Or like, like, when would that, when would taxing change hit? Like, I'm not sure I understand. And probably that was not very comprehensible as a question either, sorry.
Madam Chair, through you. I think who decides your use, in fact, I know, it's building. So the building department would tell you how many livable units you'd have at your address, and that would be a matter of fact. The assessors can't change use without the building inspector's approval. So I would start with building, and our office would be more than helpful to answer whatever questions you may have. And we can look back, as far back as we need to, to tell you what it's been in our opinion. But building would ultimately let you know what you're capable of doing at that address.
No more hands? So IG Code's public hearing closed. We have two motions in front of us, Madam Clerk, that are on the screen. Any comments from counselors, questions? Okay, let's take a roll call.
Okay, so on the two motions, as the president mentioned, that you see before you, that the city council adopts a minimum residential factor of 82.6433, the legal minimum for the city of Somerville for fiscal year 2024, and that the city council accepts the provisions of Chapter 59, Section 5C, approving a residential exemption of 35% of average assessed value for owner-occupied properties for fiscal year 2024. Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Wilson.
Yes.
Counselor Burnley.
Aye.
Counselor Gomez-Mocad.
Yes.
Counselor Kelly.
Yes.
Counselor Pineda-Nufeld.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campan. With 10 counselors in favor, none opposed, and one absent, those motions are approved.
Great. Thank you, Chief Assessor. Good to see you.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to 7.4.
The next item will be the first that the council is taking out of order, item 7.4, a request of the mayor requesting approval of a transfer of $181,740 from salary contingency to various Department of Public Works School Custodian Personal Services accounts to fund a collective bargaining settlement with the Firemen and Oilers, Local 3 Service Employees International Union.
So colleagues, we're being asked to take this up tonight. We have Assistant City Solicitor Matt Sirigu with us to present.
Good evening. Thank you, Matt Sirigu, Labor Counsel and Assistant City Solicitor. So what you have before you tonight is a successor bargaining agreement, an MOA with the school custodians. At the high level, we have, I'll address the financial issues and then talk about a couple of the non-financial terms of the agreement. The financial provisions concern a sick leave buyback program, the compensation, the wage adjustments for the next three years, a new inclement weather stipend, the detail rate, and an increase to the longevity pay. Then separately, we have a new paid family leave benefit we'll be offering, and then an increase to the out-of-grade pay availability. The non-financial terms are some new sick leave language, some clarity to the grievance procedure, and some of the drug, alcohol testing procedure, and then some administrative points concerning direct deposit and city email. I'll go in that order now. The, the sick leave buyback program is expanding, it's doubling, it's more than doubling the cap on the sick leave buyback upon retirement. When these employees retire, they'll be able to buy back their available sick leave at 25% instead of the former $13.5 per day. It's a little more equitable to have it on a percentage basis as opposed to a flat dollar amount. And the cap is being increased to 6,000 from 2,700. That was established in 2010. The COLA will be 3% per year for this fiscal year 23 to 25 agreement. We have a wage re-opener on that point, as is well-advertised and known. The city is engaged in a wage study with this group. We were able to reach an agreement and agree to return to the table after 45 days after the wage study is complete and to see where their wages are relative to the results of that study. The inclement weather stipend is being doubled to $2,500 a year. The non-city detail rate is being increased to $40 per hour from 25. And after 20 years, the longevity pay will be up $300 per, per five-year increment, 20, 25, 30, 35. The PFMLA program is, in rough terms, going to be an eight-week paid leave for FMLA qualifying purposes. The city's in the process of preparing that policy and rolling it out for non-union personnel, and we want to make sure these staff members have the same benefits that non-union personnel will have. And those are the financial terms. The remaining terms are some stronger language on sick leave management and our ability to monitor sick leave usage, clarifying a grievance procedure that both parties agreed was a little vague and ambiguous, and clarifying the process for drug and alcohol testing. I believe you all have a draft of the agreement, and I'm happy to field any questions you may have.
We have Counselor Wilson up first.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Very intriguing news about the paid family medical leave. I imagine my colleague at large is going to dig in on that momentarily. I guess then I'll just say, let's get these city workers paid right away ahead of the holidays.
Counselor Kelly.
Thanks so much. Chair, through you, to the Chief Labor Counsel. Thanks for being with us tonight. Just a couple of questions. So for the public, could you just clarify the difference between paid family medical leave and family medical leave? There are two different standards that are held in the state, and I think it's important that residents understand that what I'm reading in terms of the leave-of-absence policy and in the new language from the city that's in this contract is not paid family medical leave. It's the state's FMLA leave. Is that correct? Am I reading that correctly?
The intention, I can't say specifically at this time exactly what the city's policy will be. Your, your high-level statement is correct. There's family medical leave under the federal FMLA.
Right.
Which is an unpaid job protection, basically, for certain qualifying life events, injuries, or to care for a family member. Then, under the state PFMLA, there is a paid family medical leave benefit that many workers in Massachusetts receive. Municipalities are not de facto subject to that policy.
Correct.
You could adapt it on a local level. To my knowledge, Somerville has not done so. However, the administration's in the process of establishing a comparable benefit.
Got it. So instead of, through the chair, to clarify, we are not opting into the state's PFMLA policy, but we are adopting a municipal FMLA policy, which includes eight weeks of paid leave at the moment.
That is the option that's been discussed so far. I cannot say for certain right now what the administration is or is not going to do definitively. But an adoption would involve a city council vote and a different procedure.
Correct.
This is something, the, the, the policy that's being developed would be something the administration would be doing for non-union employees, which any administration is free to do in terms of providing paid leave benefits.
Through the chair, so just to clarify, the eight weeks, an eight-week grant of paid leave for FMLA, where is that getting paid out of? That's being paid by the city?
Correct.
And then, and the employees can take another eight unpaid weeks. Are they able to use any of their sick time to cover that eight unpaid weeks?
I believe...
It's on...
It would be an additional eight unpaid. So I'm sorry, could you restate the question?
Yeah, through the chair, so eight paid weeks are paid for by the city of Somerville, and then the employee can take an additional eight unpaid weeks.
Madam Chair, through you, that is the design and the language encompassed here. It is not finalized what the city's plan will be at this time.
I'm not asking universal. I'm just asking about the collective bargaining agreement for these employees.
Correct.
Okay, got it.
The concept right now, Madam Chair, through you, is eight weeks paid, eight weeks unpaid.
That's fantastic. And just one last clarifying question on the leave component. How does this compare to other Somerville Public School employees? What is the maximum paid leave that they are getting through SPS? I'm thinking about the teachers, the paraprofessionals. They have a collective bargaining agreement that, I'm not sure off the top of my head how many weeks of paid leave they get. Is it eight? Is it more?
Madam Chair, through you, I can't speak to the SPS benefits. They have separate labor council.
Fair. I ask only because they're all working at the same worksite, right? You go to a school, you're a custodian. Are you getting eight weeks of paid leave, and a teacher's getting 12? How do we make sure we have parity for all of our employees? And, you know, I'm super excited that the non-union employees will be getting a paid family medical leave benefit in the near future, and hopefully, as we have many contracts open at the moment, all of the union employees who are negotiating their contracts right now as well will also get a paid leave. My only other question is just on the total dollar amount of what we're being asked to approve tonight, the 181,000. So are those retroactive payments? Are they payments for the current fiscal year? Is this a one and a four, three-year contract? Like, what's this exact dollar amount for?
Madam Chair, through you, so this is the future payments for the remainder of the fiscal year. We'll be coming back for the retro payment.
Oh, so this is not the retro payment?
This does not include the retro payment.
Okay. Through the chair, so we're expecting an additional 181,000 for the cost, rough, I mean, there's obviously steps and increases built in, but this is the average low end of what a fiscal year cost for this contract is going to be.
Madam Chair, through you, I couldn't give you those numbers right now. We're, we're about four or five months into the fiscal year, so I don't know if it would be exactly half, but it would be in that neighborhood, I suppose, and there are many variables to how it would be.
Yeah.
So, so I wouldn't say that this represents a single fiscal year.
Okay. Thanks. I only ask that question because I think we've had so many conversations in this council about union employees getting a livable wage and being compensated for what they're worth and what they need to pay their bills, and for folks at home, for unions to understand what this looks like in terms of the totality of cost. I think it's helpful for people to understand that. So I don't have any further questions. Thanks so much, Chief Labor Counsel, for being with us tonight and answering all my questions, and I'll turn it back over.
Counselor Burnley.
Thank you. Through the chair, I don't have much to ask about. I just want...
Thank you. Through the chair, I don't have much to ask about. I just want to get a little bit more into the weeds about this, the distinction between, you know, the state's program around PFMLA, the federal program that we've already, you know, required to live up to, and the program that the city is developing. Are you able to speak to whether, in discussions, the state's PFMLA was discussed? Did this union want that? Were they opposed to it? You know, I'd love to just get a little bit of detail there.
I can't, Madam Chair, through you, I can't provide a ton of detail. That predates my time as Labor Counsel. I know that this policy was in the works before I started. There are, there would be significant additional costs to the state's program. It's on paper at least a third larger in terms of 12 weeks versus eight weeks, but beyond that, I'm sorry, I don't have that information.
No, but that's fine. Through you, the chair, I appreciate the information you've been able to give to us. I will only speak for myself. It is new information to me. It's positive information. To the point that you made earlier, the council could adopt the state's program because municipalities are de facto opted out. This council did introduce language to do just that much earlier this year. You know, I'm very curious if this developing policy is a response to that language, but regardless, we're moving in the right direction, and I am appreciative of that. Thank you.
Other questions? Do we need a roll call?
No.
Okay, this item's approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Colleagues, we're going to take a five-minute recess. We have to shuffle around the room a little bit, so we'll return at 8:17. We're going to get started. Colleagues, we're going to get started. All right, like the calls, we need back to order. We are going to take one more item out of order tonight. So we're going to go to 6B, which is the report of the Housing Community Development Committee. Councilor Shrazo.
Thank you, Madam President. So our regular Housing and Community Development Committee happened Wednesday, November 15. All members were present. It was a hybrid, so we were in-person and opportunity to be present online. We had a very hearty discussion about the Gilman Square Neighborhood Plan. We had a lot of community members present in the committee chamber, and we talked about, we had an update and presentation from the Economic Development Office, and we also had Dr. Galagani from OSBCD there as well. You can check the minutes on that. We talked about, we closed a bunch of items, and we talked about, I'll skip ahead, now that snow is on people's minds, or should be, the teen snow shoveling program, and the concept of a, is, are we sufficiently charging enough, or are we charging too much our seniors for this program, or are teens that are doing the shoveling, are they being paid enough? Both I and Councilor Klingon had said that we had heard from seniors that very much cost is a barrier for some of the programs. However, Director Abachi and also Council on Aging said they had not, so there was a bit of a disconnect. So I'm hoping that we can find out more information this winter, and also see, and hopefully have a end-of-season study and find out more information, see if seniors are being more burdened, especially with increase in costs, water bills, other bills, food costs, and is the price that's being charged for seniors, can seniors actually afford it? We'll find out with the snow season. We also talked about my hope for cigarette voting boxes to eliminate cigarette butt garbage in the community, which cigarette butts, as many of you may know, is the number one pollutant in our oceans. Would love if the city created simple boxes to do that. And we closed items on the 100 Homes Program Maintenance. Let's see, what else? Yeah, and we also discussed the three and four-bedroom affordable housing stock and plans for the years to come. All of these discussions are reflected in the minutes, and I offer these minutes for your approval. Thank you.
Any questions on the committee report? Reports approved. Thank you, Councilor Shrazo. That brings us, I believe, now, Madam Clerk, to item 8.1.
Yes, item 8.1 is an officer's communication from the Director of the Department of Racial and Social Justice conveying the preliminary findings of the Public Safety for All Survey.
All right. We have Director Melina Capers here, along with her team, so I will pass this over to the director here. I ask that we listen to the presentation, write your questions down, keep them to the end, and then we'll open it up for discussion and questions at the end.
Thank you, Madam President. Through the chair, good evening, Madam Vice President and Honorable City Council. Good evening to Madam Mayor Ballantyne, members of the community, city department heads and staff, and Somerville youth. I would like to express my sincere gratitude for the support the Department of Racial and Social Justice has received from City Council, Madam Mayor Ballantyne, and city departments, particularly Summerstat, who has been a great help on this project. I'd also like to thank our community partners, and most especially, Somerville community members. I especially could not have done this complex survey study without my incredible RSJ staff. I would like for them to stand and be acknowledged for their hard work in the last year and a half. The faith and time afforded to this department to conduct this survey has allowed for intentional engagement strategies that we are very excited to share, and has brought us to this very moment where I am able to say that this survey is one of the most representative surveys conducted by the city in its surveying history. On today's agenda, we will do a quick introduction of the initiative's history and a brief look at the methodology behind the survey. We will discuss high-level takeaways for the survey as a whole, and then dive into preliminary findings broken up into three sections. Those sections are perceptions of safety, encounters with police, and perceptions of police. Last, you'll find the appendix, including details about the survey's open data. Before we talk about the preliminary findings, I would like to quickly share how this initiative came to be. In 2019, the Department of Racial and Social Justice was created, and I was hired in 2021 as a new director and charged with developing the mission and goals of the RSJ department and to move forward the initial mandates given to the department. These mandates included developing the civilian Oversight Task Force, the RSJ Fund, and finally, to reimagine policing in Somerville, what we now know as our Public Safety for All Initiative. Because to have safe and thriving communities, it is critical to expand conversations beyond policing. We are here today to specifically discuss the findings of the first phase of the PSFA Public Safety for All Initiative, which is the Public Safety for All Survey. We developed the survey questions through extensive research, using nationwide similar surveys as a guide, and taking into account feedback of several subject matter experts. Their surveying period ran from September 2022 to March 2023. We developed a community outreach strategy that was intentional to focus on our populations who are vulnerable and most impacted by social injustices. In September, we began outreach for the survey. The survey was promoted at ward meetings, community meetings, farmers' markets, and other city events, through canvassing and door knocking, via email, text message, robocalls, and one-on-one interviews, and on social media. We collaborated with nine city departments, 36 community partners, and held 23 focus groups reaching 144 constituents. We also hosted five public webinars for foundational knowledge for our constituents. All of this work, over a year and a half, has led us to this very exciting moment where we get to share with you these high-level takeaways in the form of our preliminary findings for the Public Safety for All Survey. The full report will be available in early 2024, as we want to ensure equity and inclusivity through sharing the report in multiple languages and forums. The report will also include secondary data sources to support the findings, and will be accompanied by more resources that will make up the full Public Safety for All study. We received 1,296 responses to the PSFA survey. And although this number is a great achievement, what is more important is that we received enough responses from demographic subgroups to analyze these groups' responses separately, particularly those most impacted by policing and public safety in Somerville. People of color, immigrants, the elderly, people who identified as having a disability, and LGBTQIA+ identifying people. We set a goal to get at least 30 responses from each demographic subgroup. Our survey is generally representative across ward, race, age, and disability status, compared to Somerville's actual makeup. But because of our focus on receiving responses from hard-to-reach, vulnerable subgroups, we have overrepresentation of traditionally underrepresented groups like non-binary respondents and other language respondents. So let's take a look at our highest-level takeaways overall. Respondents positively rate their perceptions and encounters with the Somerville Police Department and public safety in Somerville as a whole. Immigrant respondents report more positive perceptions, but certain respondent groups report more negative perceptions and experiences around public safety in Somerville. Non-binary people, and those who identify as LGBTQIA+ and/or as people with disabilities...
Madam Chair, I apologize, but could we see the slides?
Are they available?
They should be. They're attached to the item.
Okay. Can we get them on the screen?
Okay, Liz will do that now. Liz will do that now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Or people with disabilities report much lower average perceptions than those who do not. Please keep in mind that while we can see that these differences exist, we do not have enough data to determine why they exist. Further studies are necessary to look more into these effects. Now that we've discussed the high level overall takeaways of the survey, I will now share with you the main findings for each section. First, let's begin with perceptions of safety. Feelings of safety in Somerville vary according to time of day and location. For some of these contexts, we see variation by gender, race, ethnicity, and LGBTQIA+ status. Respondents feel most safe at home and least safe when biking. Black and Hispanic, Latino respondents feel lower ratings of safety, particularly women. LGBTQIA+ respondents have similar ratings of safety to the city overall, with non-white LGBTQIA+ respondents feeling less safe than their white counterparts. For LGBTQIA+ respondents, gender differences are minor, except for non-binary, non-white respondents, who feel much less safe than non-white binary respondents. Feelings of safety do not vary substantially or consistently by ward, age, immigration, or disability status. The main concerns of respondents when it comes to public safety are traffic safety, theft and burglaries, housing security, gun violence, and illegal drug activity. Next, I'll discuss the encounters with police. Perceptions of encounters vary by gender, LGBTQIA+ status, and disability status. Non-binary people and those who identify as LGBTQIA+ or having a disability, the effects are very strong and negative. Those who identify as both LGBTQIA+ and persons with disabilities report the most negative perceptions. There is a slight variation in perceptions by ward, with wards one and six reporting higher perceptions. Removing respondents who report the most negative perceptions, we can find no more differences across race, ethnicity, or binary gender categories. That is, non-binary LGBTQIA+ and disabled respondents report much lower ratings of encounters with police in Somerville. For those who do not identify as those demographic groups, there are no differences in how those of different races, ethnicities, or binary genders rate their encounters with SPD. There is no substantial variation by race for encounters with police, with encounters being somewhat positive. Black and Hispanic or Latino respondents report slightly higher averages, and these scores come largely from those who identify as immigrants. In our third and final section, perceptions of police, similar to ratings of encounters with police, general perceptions of SPD vary by gender, LGBTQIA+ status, and disability status. Additionally, these encounter ratings vary by immigration status and age. Here, non-binary people and those who identify as LGBTQIA+ and/or as people with disabilities report much lower average perceptions than those who do not identify as such, while those identifying as immigrants report higher average perceptions. There is a marked difference in perceptions of police treating people with respect by disability status, but only for non-binary and LGBTQIA+ respondents. If we look at responses by ward, in general, respondents reported that the SPD almost always treats people in their neighborhood with respect and between sometimes and almost always makes the respondent feel safe. Ratings of feeling safe are generally lower than ratings of treating people with respect, but follow a similar pattern across wards. If we look at race, non-white race, ethnicity groups tend to have higher ratings of police treating people with respect and making them feel safe. This difference is driven in large part by immigrant respondents, which is similar to the ratings that we got for police encounters. If we look at age, ratings of whether SPD make respondents feel safe do vary by age, with those 45 years or older reporting higher average ratings than those who are below the age of 45. We asked constituents to share their top five suggestions for SPD improvement. It is crucial to understand the cultural nuances and specific needs of groups within our Somerville community. So we share these results broken down by race. Overall, the top five suggestions for SPD improvement were adding mental health professionals to response teams, adding social workers to response teams, mental health crisis training, community policing, and transparency and communication through sharing information and data. It is an ethical imperative to look more intentionally at the responses from constituents that have the potential for disproportionate impacts because of their ethnic or racial backgrounds. Asian or Pacific Islanders named their top three responses as the following: adding social workers to response teams, adding mental health workers to response teams, and there was a tie between transparency and communication through sharing information and data, and more community policing. Black or African-American respondents noted these as their top three responses: more community policing, increasing police presence, and there was a tie between ensuring youth have a voice within the police department, hosting community events, and mental health crisis training. The Hispanic or Latino population respondents noted as their top three: more community policing, mental health professionals on response teams, and mental health crisis training. White or Caucasian noted their top three as mental health professionals on response teams, social workers on response teams, and mental health crisis training. We had two other categories of other, and the next was two or more races. Other responded as more community policing, mental health crisis training, and mental health professionals on response teams. Two or more races responded as their top three: mental health crisis training, mental health professionals on response teams, and social workers on response teams. Notably, adding social workers or mental health professionals to response teams did not make the top three for black or African-American race respondents. Developing strategies that are responsive to the disparities within our community is vital to build trust and accountability and to create safe, unified communities. In conclusion, respondents who feel more safe in the city feel less safe around police, and respondents who feel less safe in the city overall feel more safe around police. So what happens next? We presented this data to the Public Safety for All Task Force and some city departments in October 2023. We will upload preliminary results to the PSFA micro page in this month, 2023. We plan to share results with the Civilian Oversight Task Force and Anti-Violence Working Group in November of 2023. We plan to share results with the city departments and community partners throughout winter and spring of 2024. We also plan to share the full survey report and Public Safety for All study in early 2024. And we plan to host constituent webinars, both virtual and a public meeting in person, to share these results with the community and give them an opportunity to give their thoughts and ask questions. I thank you all for your time, and we are open to questions or needs for clarification
Council Brenly.
Thank you to the Chair and thank you to the Director for going through that survey. I'm very grateful to have this information before us. As members of this committee know, this is something that we have been urgently hoping for, for quite a while. And it's full of a lot of information, including, you know, things that I found a little surprising, like there was a note that cyclists feel that they are treated differently by police, and that was noted. And also that traffic safety was a top safety concern, which I, you know, I hear quite often from my constituents. The way the presentation was structured, and this kind of gets to the, a question about like the full report, the way the presentation was structured was perceptions of safety, interactions with perception, interactions with police and perceptions of SPD, in that order. It was not, although the information is in the, the slides, it was not perceptions of safety, interactions with police. There was a note that we went through quite extensively in this presentation about how to improve SPD response. We did not go through, though the data was in there a bit, about how to improve safety. And I do want to just note that these are important distinctions that I do not believe should be conflated. Policing and safety are not necessarily the same thing, and the, the data that is presented in this survey seems to point to that. Slide 40, for example, notes that when asked how to improve safety or the perception of safety, the top response that's listed with 61 people is alternatives to policing. Similarly, on slide 59, alternatives also tops the list at 77 responses. So the first question I have is, in the full report, do we get more in-depth at the, the more free-form responses that people were able to give in the survey?
Through the Chair. Council Brenly, are you asking if we're going to be putting all the comments, the open response comments, in the full report?
Through the Chair, yes.
We could, although I don't know if that would, we may add it in as an appendix.
Through the Chair, I think that's fine, you know. That, that part of this form, I think, is really helpful because when we get into discussions and we, we have a lot of polls, and I'm sure Summerstat was really helpful for that, for the data mining and putting together. But that's like, kind of like, you know, playing in a sandbox. We have the answers as are presented to us, we have, you know, a bit of wiggle room to kind of, or respondents have a bit of wiggle room to respond. But when we start to see things like people saying, "As a cyclist, I feel more unsafe," or that I've been getting disparate treatment, that's why, for me, as a counselor, it starts to get interesting in terms of how do we actually respond and improve perceptions of safety. My next question is a kind of a data question. The Director noted that folks with disabilities who were LGBTQ were much more likely to feel unsafe around the police. There was one response that was at 1.9, which is closer to never feeling safer to police than, than sometimes, which is, I, for me, I find it quite concerning. But there is a point in the, the polls that were displayed where folks with disabilities who identify as LGBTQ, the male and the female were put together, but it's, it follows a series of polls where they were separated out. Is there, my question is, is there more data that kind of separates those outs? Or what was the thinking that, for why those were pushed together in that specific slide?
Through the Chair. Thank you, Counselor. So throughout our analysis, we used 30 as a benchmark of number of respondents for, for demographic subgroups. And then when you start to do those cross-tabulations, we use 10 as a number for, for instance, those who are LGBTQ disabled and either, and then gender on top of that. So in areas where we combined binary genders, that was because there were not 10 respondents from the male and female category, and they were combined to give that, that number for binary genders.
Thank you. If any counselors have any questions, on the point. Okay, thank you. Thank you. That, that makes a lot of sense. Just want to, it seemed like a discrepancy, but just wanted to have the understanding about why that was. In the full report, are we expecting to see any more information about why respondents felt certain ways about their interactions with SPD? There is some of that in the, the slides. For example, COVID and anxiety were listed as reasons why people with disabilities felt unsafe around SPD, among other things. Does that get mined anymore later in the report, or?
Through the Chair. Thank you, Counselor. One of the most exciting parts of these survey results to me are that this isn't a dead end. And while we can see that there are some correlations, for instance, between identifying as disabled and having more negative perceptions of police, and while we can investigate some of the write-in comments to see why these correlations might exist, we would like to do further research to determine why those correlations exist. So the full report won't necessarily say this is why folks feel this way. The further report will point to more studies that need to be done to determine the exact causation here. So again, we see some correlation between having these identities and experiencing these experiences, but further research is needed to determine why those effects exist.
Thank you. And I'll just, I'll end by just saying that I think this is really important, particularly the aspect of this report that focuses on perceptions of safety and how to improve safety. You know, we, we have a lot of information in front of us that gets into why certain demographics feel particular ways about safety in general. Women were much likely, much less likely to feel safe throughout this. Again, I found it surprising that folks who were cyclists felt more unsafe than, on a bike than they did walking alone at night. That was one particularly surprising statistic. But yesterday was a trans day of remembrance. We've seen through our studies with the school age population in Somerville, a lot of folks who identify as genderqueer or LGBTQ having had it just a really tough and awful last couple of years in terms of mental health, and they're feeling of safety in the community. So I, as the presenter has kind of noted, I see a lot of room for growth and more investigation in these results, and I look forward to partnership in terms of exploring how we can go from a, a phase of understanding the problem to solving the problem and adding in more programming and infrastructure to make sure that everyone feels safer. Thank you.
Through the Chair. Thank you, Council Brenly. We, I, I just wanted to note that one of the very exciting pieces as well is the fact that the Public Safety for All Task Force is getting this full report, and their mission is to work on two main things, which is the alternative or co-response model as well as work on two main things, which is the alternative or co-response model, as well as a new public safety infrastructure based on what our community voiced as their needs. And we always welcome any counselor, I always welcome any counselor who wants to meet and talk about any ideas or feedback that they may have. I think that the task force will greatly appreciate having feedback from the counselors. And so I'm just sending out the welcome to reach out if, if you want to meet.
Counselor Kelly.
Thanks so much, through the Chair, to y'all. This is an awkward angle, so I apologize. Thank you all for, for being with us tonight, and you know, I'm the counselor-appointed person on the Public Safety for All Task Force, so I've had a preview of this. But I will admit, 64 slides coming down real hard after the assessor, so I'm like, still trying to understand all this data. So, you know, most of my questions just have to do with pieces of information that aren't necessarily in the slide deck at the moment, which I, I know the public will, will ask just based on what is currently in the slide deck, but just a couple of really high-level questions to get started. So I'm, I'm super excited that this data is going to be made accessible to the public. I think that's one of the real barriers that our residents have when studies and surveys come before them, is, is the information just kind of goes into a void, and how much can it be trusted? How, how much can it be followed? How can we actually see what's going into these surveys on the back end? So, you know, I, I went through the slide deck, and there is a section in the appendix that has the open data platform, but it's not up at the moment. So yeah, I'm looking at the Summerstat team, but when is that open data platform going to be made accessible to the public?
Hello, I'm Anna Gartsmann, I'm the Director of Summerstat. Happy to be here. I pushed live about half an hour ago.
Oh, wonderful, great. I clicked it probably about an hour ago, so that might be why. So could you just walk through what information will be made public, to the public, what information you won't be giving to the public, if any?
Yes, of course. So we're releasing the open data in kind of three pieces. One is the full dataset. One is a data dictionary explaining kind of how we got from the survey instrument to the dataset, so people can know what they're looking at. And then a data explorer visualization tool, so that people don't have to download the data to explore it, if they're more comfortable with the visualization. So the dataset contains one row per survey response, so all survey responses are included. Data has been cleaned to preserve anonymity, combine small groups in some cases, and enable calculation. But the only things that are excluded at the moment are open data comments, sort of open comment fields, because they tend to include identifying information. We are able to provide a sort of comment coding if there are requests. So basically, upon request, if you want to know something like how many comments mentioned by cyclists, we can kind of compile and provide that data. Then the data dictionary kind of explains how to interpret the data table and how it relates to the survey. Most survey questions were scale questions, so on a scale of 1 to 4 or 1 to 5. So when you see those averages on the charts showing something like 1.9, that's on a scale of 1 to 5. So the data dictionary explains how we went from the survey instrument to the data fields. And then the visualization, so although you had 64 slides, I would say that is a small portion of the amount of analysis that we did and that one can do. So we're providing the Tableau public visualization tool to allow people to kind of explore the sort of demographic effects that we're finding by themselves.
Through the Chair, that's a fantastic summary. You know, I think, obviously, there have been many of these surveys done nationally, statewide, and even in our own backyard of Tufts University. My former college professor, Brian Schaffner, who did the study back in 2020, obviously had his really big study around perceptions of policing, both in Somerville and Medford. And so I think there will be lots of curiosity amongst constituents to compare datasets. So knowing that this information is going to be public and that people can run their own numbers is, is fabulous. Just a couple other clarifying questions on, on methodologies. So if I remember correctly, it wasn't just constituents and residents who were able to fill out the survey, it's also people who work in the city, also city staff, people who work at city businesses. Am I getting that correct? Do we have a sense of how many city employees filled out this survey?
Through the Chair, there was not a question specifically on the survey to designate if you were a city employee, no.
Got it. I only ask that because there are, you know, a small number of departments who are going to be deeply impacted by this, and so I think it would have been interesting to know how many of said employees potentially filled out the survey and impacted the results of it. Just moving through some of my questions that I wrote down. So in going through the information, you know, you talked a lot about queer folks, LGBTQIA+ people, disabled folks, and, you know, extrapolating their data from the larger dataset. And I think Director Moynis-Capers, you mentioned that the low, the folks who have the lowest perception of safety in, in Somerville are non-binary LGBTQIA+ folks of color. Is there a dataset in a different slide deck that extrapolates those folks? You know, in going through, I, I don't think I saw particularly a LGBTQIA+ measured up with white and non-white respondents, or black and Latino respondents, Asian American Pacific Islander respondents, white respondents, et cetera. It, it could be in the appendix, but I didn't see it. Is there a slide that was missing, or it just wasn't included in this presentation tonight?
Sorry, could you just clarify through, through the Chair?
Yeah. So there is lots of breakdowns of the data in this PowerPoint, particularly around LGBTQIA status, gender identity, and folks with disabilities. A lot of those are matched up against each other, or with each other, I should say. So folks who identify as LGBTQIA+ and also who have, identify as having a disability. I didn't see a slide that had LGBTQIA+ and racial identification. Is, is that a slide that's coming in the future? I, I, there was a comment made, so I just want to make sure that that data gets represented in the slide deck eventually.
Through the Chair. Thank you, Counselor. So if you look at slide 31, we have perceptions of safety broken down. This is for folks who identified as LGBTQIA+. And amongst those who identified as LGBTQIA+, we were able to look at two groups, white and non-white, based on, again, those numbers of 30 and 10. In most of our analysis, we noticed the most negative effects looking at LGBTQIA folks, and then to further identify effects based on race, we removed those respondents from the dataset to investigate, again, effects based on race. And that is why the, the deck is structured as it is. But analysis is definitely possible, looking within LGBTQIA folks at race, but I believe that this analysis would be between non-white and white respondents, again, because of those response totals.
That's, that's fair. I asked that question only because there were so many slides in the non-appendix that had to do with LGBTQIA+ identified folks and, and folks with disabilities. So I mean, I think it would be helpful, at least I'm asking those questions, and my guess is somebody else is probably asking this question as well. Just going through. So in slide 25, the suggestions for SPD improvements by race, do you also have any of the SPD improvements by people who identify as women, LGBTQIA+ identified folks, disabled folks, or non-binary folks? Just, again, I'm, I'm pulling the data that I have at my disposal, which is the slides that were in the slide deck. And so I think, you know, obviously, you all have pointed out how those folks in particular feel unsafe or have a perception of, of unsafety when it comes to policing. And so do you have what those top responses were for suggestions?
Through the Chair. Thank you. Yes, we can pull that information. I don't have it readily available right now. As you noted, the 64 slides is tons of information, and we were trying to keep it brief, so there's a lot more information than is here, but we can definitely pull that.
Totally understandable, and you know, of course, this is preliminary data, so I, you know, I would just say, given the number of slides that did focus on LGBTQIA folks, women, folks with disabilities, I think it would be critical to not just uplift the, the struggles that they're seeing in the survey, but also the suggestions that they're, they're creating through the survey as well. And then just a question on methodology. So in the early part of the slide deck, you talk about focus groups and sending out the survey, the length of the time that the survey was put out. Were, were focus groups used to collect survey information? Or were they just places that disseminated survey information? The focus groups were mentioned, and I just want to understand how they fit into the collection of the data.
Through the Chair.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Counselor, can you rephrase the question?
Sure. Let me just scroll up to the top of the slide deck. So in the slide deck, in the methodology section, there was a discussion about focus groups as a part of the process, I should say, where, you know, you had 23 focus groups, I think it was the number that you, you listed off. In those focus groups, were people surveyed and that information collected was put into this dataset? Or was that just a place where people were given the survey and then they surveyed themselves at home?
Through the Chair. Thank you, Counselor Kelly. At these focus groups, folks were asked to take the survey at the end of the focus group. During the focus group, they were asked, I believe, five questions, and those questions closely aligned with the survey questions. However, those responses are not in anything that you're seeing right now. Those will be used in a similar way to the open response questions, where we may include some quotes from focus groups in the final report.
Got it.
But again, those folks' voices were recorded in the survey as well.
And is it possible either now or in the, you know, final report to, to list off what those focus groups were? Could you just give a couple of examples of what the 23 focus groups were?
Through the Chair. We can give high-level examples of the, of what the focus groups were. However, part of the reason why we were able to gain the trust and build relationships with certain community groups is because we allowed them to be anonymous within the focus groups, but they were specifically chosen because we were trying to get specific demographic groups and make sure that we had a full representative group and number of constituents within Somerville as a whole.
So they were like, identity-based focus groups, like neighborhood-based focus groups?
So...
Through the Chair. So we did collaborate with community organizations to host focus groups, and we also collaborated with SOYA as well to host focus groups in non-English languages. So some of the, the community organizations that we worked with were specifically with youth, with teen empowerment, with the Mystic Learning Center, with the Welcome Project, Padres Latinos, Temple Benai Breth, et cetera. So we collaborated with a lot of community organizations. Again, as the focus of our survey was to represent kind of underrepresented populations, this was a tool of our outreach to get closer to these populations and utilize existing partnerships where trust has already been established so that we can gain their feedback.
And just one specific question, so you know, back in February of 2020, there, I, I wouldn't describe it as a focus group, but for the, for the interest of this conversation, we maybe can, there was a, a large public meeting of folks who had been at the straight pride protest, right? Overwhelmingly queer and trans folks who were in the room. I think that was a really interesting conversation that was had. You know, whether or not folks feel like they were heard, or there were outcomes that came out of that meeting is, is another question. But just given the, I don't want to say over-representation, because I think that's an alienating word for me to use, but the, the demographic swath of LGBTQIA folks who are highlighted in this dataset, but also their answers in this dataset, was there any effort to reach out to that group of, of residents who had come together in February 2020 to specifically talk about LGBTQIA issues? You know, it's very rare that we have queer spaces like that that are put together by the city. So were those folks outreach to for the purpose of this survey?
Through the Chair. We did not outreach to specifically discuss the, the happenings of why they got together in February 2020, but we did reach out to some folks in order to have them participate in the survey.
On that point?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, this is my last comment. You know, I, I asked that question because I think, as a queer person, I'm, I'm looking at this data, and I'm like, yeah, I got pepper sprayed at that action, like as a queer person in a public space full of queer people. I didn't get pepper sprayed by another protester, I got pepper sprayed by a police officer. So you know, I think it's, we had this moment in Somerville's not distant history that was really violent and painful and collective for queer people who live in Somerville. And there were some really clear and loud suggestions made in that space, and it was also a, a public forum that came together. So I, you know, I, I, I look at this data and it makes sense to me, as somebody who has been in those spaces and who has experienced that feeling of, of being utterly violated by the state. So I, I hope, as you know, all of you have said, there's more studies to be done, there's more data to be collected, that this group of folks who have come forward and spoken truth to power and given their experiences, particularly around feeling safe, really gets heard and not alienated or isolated as some fringe group in our community, but as our neighbors and, and people who have real lived experiences in pain in the city and who really need, need some change to be seen. So I don't have any more questions at the moment. I know that I will have more questions, both as a constituent and in my, my last few weeks on the council, but you know, hopefully, some of the suggestions get integrated into an updated dataset when it comes before the council again. Hopefully, you all come before the council when there are new counselors here and present this all over again, because I think this, this is a lot to chew on, and folks need to hear it over and over again. So thanks so much for answering my questions tonight, really appreciated it.
Through the Chair. Thank you, Counselor. And I, just a reminder that if there's any other ways that you wish to see the data, if you go online and you can play around with the Tableau and see the different visualizations and, and the data and the way that you would like to reference them.
On that point, Counselor Burnley.
Thank you. On that point, just to give a bit more of an answer to Counselor Kelly's question. Slide 43 specifically asks, "Why did, quote, 'Why did non-binary LGBTQIA and people with disabilities consistently report more negative experiences,'?" And I'm guessing, "with police," without brackets. And in that slide, one of the examples or reasons given was, quote, "protests. Some participants described encounters at protests," which I, as, which I took as a reference to what the good counselor at large was referencing. And so I just want to make that point to say, it, it was captured in a way in the data. It is, I think, it is still very alive in this community, and I would just encourage the departments, departments who put this together in the final report to, if possible, really dig into the folks who feel the most unsafe in the community, which often in this data shows as folks with disabilities, people who are LGBTQIA. Because they, I think the way we improve perceptions of safety is by meeting their needs and understanding why they feel the way they do. Nationally, folks with disabilities are at a much more likely to experience violence generally, but also from police. And really getting their suggestions, I think, could be beneficial for the community. Thanks.
Through the Chair.
Sure.
Thank you, Counselor Burnley. Just as, as part of our next steps, that is why we're speaking with city departments and community partners. We won't unfortunately have the quick results and responses to why they feel that way, but that is why we're meeting with city departments and community partners, so that we can get some kind of study done, so that we can learn more about the whys.
Counselor Scott is next, and we'll come back, Counselor Kelly.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to say thanks for the presentation, but especially for the data. Thank you for pushing it live. The Tableau is great. It's fun to play around with. I encourage everybody to do it. I also downloaded the dataset immediately, because I love me a good dataset. There is a lot to go into here. I don't want to take everybody's time tonight with it, with a dataset that literally got released 30 minutes ago. I'm sure I'm going to have more questions after that. You know, one of the, one of the first things that jumped out at me that I was just curious about was, for example, you can, you know, how for example, you can, you know, how many, you know, have you had an encounter with a Somerville police officer? You know, 705 respondents said yes to that. And then a little bit later, there's a question about, have you ever been treated inappropriately, verbally or physically, by a Somerville police officer? And somewhere north of 10% of those said yes. So, interesting stuff to pull out. I'm sure everybody's going to bring their own flavor to it, their own window for looking at this data, but I really appreciate the extraordinary step of making the entire data set available, and I look forward to discussing this more, whether it's in committee or at the council level, as the full report is released. Just thank you. These are results that we have been hoping for and asking for for a number of years, and I am very glad to see them. Thank you.
Counsel Kelly.
Thank you, Chair. I lied, I had one last go at the apple. I've got one meeting left, so I might as well. Just a couple clarifying questions around how people were able to identify as disabled. Could you just talk a little bit about, like, was it just a button? And if people clicked disabled, that was the button that they clicked? Or could... I'm just... I'm trying to understand that component, because I think, especially when we talk about the issue of policing and systems of safety, the topic that comes up over and over and over again is mental health. And I can speak from experience, there are a lot of folks who struggle with mental health issues who may not identify as disabled, and there are many who do identify as disabled. And so, being able to extrapolate those two pieces of information, but also making sure people feel heard through that, it just feels critical. So, could you just talk about the disabled categorization? Were people able to add details on their disability or comments on that, just so I can have some information on that clarity?
Through the chair.
Yeah.
Question 24 on the survey asks, "We want to be inclusive of all Somerville constituents. How would you describe yourself? Select as many as apply." And some examples are employed in Somerville, English language learner, immigrant, LGBTQIA+ And so, this was a select all that apply question, and the option was person with disabilities for those who identify as disabled. There was also an other please explain write-in. So, folks who identified as disabled and wanted to give further details could give those details in the other. But we did not specifically ask what type of disability, whether that be a mental health identified individual. However, I wanted to just point to slide 43. Again, looking at, we see these results, but we want to investigate further why this is happening. One of the bullets on that slide says anxiety. Some participants described feeling anxiety in the presence of police. And so, we can look at, for instance, the breakdown of respondents to that question. Did those who identified as persons with disabilities also write in describing anxiety around police? So, that's just one way to potentially get at that type of question.
Sure. And yeah, I would say, moving forward, asking more specific questions along those lines. And I'm thinking also, how do we ask questions that have to do with folks who use substances? I know there's lots and lots of research out there and data that is verified and independently collected and probably even collected in HHS by the overdose prevention folks over there, but, you know, hitting some of these community groups that are experiencing systems of policing in a different way than somebody who might get pulled over on a bicycle or get pulled over in a vehicle. So, that's just a clarifying question I had. Thanks for answering that. I promise I'm done now.
Counselor Gomazmokan. I have a quick question, slide 21, and this is in general. I'm assuming, do we have a correlation with, this is perceptions of SPD between the perceptions, the amount of police activity in that, you know, for example, Ward 1, Ward 6 versus the perceptions? Will that be, there be a correlation there?
Through the chair. Just to clarify, are you asking, looking at the amount of police activity in the ward compared to the response?
Yeah.
So, that information will not be in the study? I'm thinking about where that policing data might live, if you could independently compare, but that information will not be in the study?
It's something I'm curious about when I see these numbers, that there might be some sort of correlation. I do want to emphasize and appreciate the effort to find different ways to reach out to the community. As the only fluent Spanish speaker, bilingual in this horseshoe right now, I truly understand when people feel safer talking to you because you speak their language, you share their culture, which is, and I think to my colleagues, this is incredibly important in terms of reaching out and hearing the voices of those who normally don't have a voice. I know there have been surveys done in the past, there was a mailer done out there, which has its own biases. And when we're trying to break the ways we do a survey, I think this is an important effort that we should really recognize and incredibly value. Because I was in one of the meetings that, with Padres Latinos and Parents, and it kind of opened my eyes as to how others perceive policing, what it means to them. There was particularly a father there who wanted police around because he works all the time, his child is exposed to different environments than maybe a privileged white child is, for whatever reason. And to him, that was a risk of losing his child to criminal activity or something, and his child's future completely being, you know, just decimated. So, that was an opening that's something I don't have to think about myself. So, that was a very important thing, that one experience I had. So, again, I appreciate and I urge my colleagues in the future to think about how others, you know, what other situations, you know, we sometimes... It's hard to put ourselves in other's shoes, but it's an incredibly important piece when we're talking about policing and safety. And it could be, you know, as my colleagues are referring to LGBTQ... I'm going to forget one letter, and my son will yell at me. Yeah, sorry. I don't have my Marco Police here. Or, you know, or whether it's, you know, immigrant, non-English speaker person. So, I think there's a great gamut, and hopefully, we can address all. Thank you.
Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you for the presentation and for the data. I won't say all the great things that have been said, but I certainly echo them and appreciate, and this is super cool. I have a question, sort of two parts. One, just to help me understand why it was presented this way in the slide, there may be no real substantive reason that it was, and that's fine. I mean, then two, to help me understand how I would, and this might be a not-now kind of thing, because I'm not... I did start playing with the data, and I'm not really good at that kind of stuff, but I'm sure there's a way to do it, but maybe at some point someone could refer others to look. But so, you started out, Director Milinkampers, by noting, clearly correctly, that it's important to really think about these issues in terms of, you know, the broader experience of the public, but also particularly for the folks who are most negatively impacted by any thing in this case, you know, public safety and police specifically, as a lot of these questions go to. And the slides, as you know, clearly show a pretty clear distinction in the perception experiences that people with disabilities and people who identify as LGBTQIA+ experience. And in bold letters then says, "There's not a substantial variation in race ethnicity ratings for general perceptions." And so, that, and it says that a couple times, which I don't know if it's surprising or not, I find that interesting and, you know, good to sort of see that data just from a standpoint. But then the next slide, in terms of the suggestions for improvement, breaks up the suggestions by race. And that kind of struck me, I thought we were building towards sort of this, here's where there's clear distinction, but then the slide breaking it up by race, since I was sort of looking for the next slide that broke up the suggestions for improvements by the categories where there were clear differences. So, my question is, why the slide that's based on race, when we just sort of explained that there really wasn't a big difference overall? And then, how does somebody go and look at the suggestions for improvements based on the categories where there was a significant difference?
Through the chair. Thank you, Counselor Davis. I'll answer the first part, and then I'll let Elizabeth and Anna respond to the second piece. The slide where we noted the differences by race was specifically to note what those particular races ranked as their top three for changes or reforms that they would like to have happen as suggestions for SPD improvement. So, that was a very specific response to that question. And we thought that it was important to break it down by race, because we know that there is a history of a relationship, traumatic relationship with people of color and the history of policing. And so, it's important for us not to hide the fact that it is important to note it by race and that there are disproportionate effects and impacts to people of color when it comes to policing in general. And so, we need to be able to definitely understand all races within our community, but note that the ones who are disproportionately impacted by any decisions that we here in government make and reforms that we make or policies or procedures, they will ultimately be the ones that will be most impacted by those changes. And so, we need to be able to, again, as an ethical imperative, listen to the voices that will be mostly impacted while still taking into account other voices. I'll pass it on to Liz.
Can I just follow up on that?
Absolutely.
So, thank you for that, and I... That totally makes sense. I mean, I think, you know, we all sort of come to this conversation, you know, where you and I first engaged in our conversation was, you know, the Committee on Legislative Matters was in the process of looking at a number of initiatives that began in 2020 following, you know, and a number of incidents, including obviously the murder of George Floyd. But I guess I was... It's not clear to me how the data supports what certainly is my presumption, and is a presumption that you just sort of explained, sort of going into, that we have this understanding that, you know, that people of different races are disproportionately impacted by policing. How does this data... Where does this data show that, or does it? Does it show the opposite, and that's just maybe an anomaly in our city? How do we reconcile what we think is sort of an obvious baseline scenario, but in bold text in a couple places, you have where it seems to say the opposite? I'm just trying to make sure I understand how I should read the data.
Through the chair. Thank you, Counselor Davis, a very valid question. And again, I'll answer the first part and then pass it on to... Because part of the answer is history, and the second part of the answer is more about data specific to Somerville. But what I will note is that the reason why people of color are most impacted in Somerville and nationwide, quite frankly, is because we have areas in our community that have more crime than others. We have areas in our community that need to be patrolled more often than others in order to keep people safe. And so, that is a fact in any city, in any state in the United States. And so, I'm going to pass it on to Liz and Elizabeth and Anna to answer more closely to the data point of that response.
Thank you. Through the chair. Thank you, Counselor Davis. I believe you're referencing slide 24 and then slide 25. Slide 24 says that for respondents who don't identify as non-binary LGBTQIA+ or having a disability, there is not substantial variation in race ethnicity ratings for general perceptions of police. This statement is specifically referencing the questions of, "Do Somerville police treat people in your neighborhood with respect?" And "Do Somerville police make you feel safe?" That is what that summary statement is reflecting. It is not discussing the suggestions for improvement question, where it asks folks to select... Select... Let me pull it up specifically, so I don't misstate. To select what they suggest the Somerville Police Department could do better to serve them and their community. So, again, the slide 24 is referencing the questions of, "Do Somerville police treat people in your neighborhood with respect?" And "Do they make you feel safe?" And to that question, when you remove, again, those respondents with the most negative results, so non-binary LGBTQIA+ and those who identify as persons with disabilities, there is not substantial variation based on race or ethnicity.
Okay, thank you. And through the President, you just maybe realize this, that's removing those respondents, so that's not controlling, that's not a reverse control, but you... I guess if you were going to really look at the impact, the differences among race, you would keep those respondents and factor their race in. So, I mean, that's a different, that's just a different way to analyze the data, right? So, okay, I'm making sure I understand that. I guess, you know, it also comes up on slide, I think, 24, or 20... Slide 20. There's a few places where it talks about, you know, there's no minor, if any, differences across race ethnicity, and that was surprising to me. How would one go about, and if this is an easy answer, or if the answer is like, who do they contact if they want to help get help digging in? That was probably a better answer, you know, to look at the suggestions for improvement based on the, you know, separated by the categories where there really was a significant difference in the perceptions or any of the other categories that we talked about.
Through the chair. If I can take a stab at addressing your first question, I think, there is... You asked why, sort of you can have no variation in perceptions of police, but we still want to focus on the improvements by race. And I think the difference is that you can have the similar perceptions of police, but be more likely to be affected by police if you are in a more police sort of demographic group. And so, what Director Milinkampers is saying is that we still, even though there is no difference in perceptions of police, which is good by race, like, kind of people are reporting similar levels of satisfaction, we still want to make sure that we're accounting for suggestions for improvement from demographic groups that are more likely to encounter police, even if they feel good about those encounters. Did I capture that? All right, excellent. We'll get back to the data in one second. I want to confirm something. On the data side, the data set we provided does include the suggestions provided by respondents in many columns in the data set. So, one can pull that information from the data set we provided, and also, I and Liz are able to do so upon request.
Okay, so, we and members of the public could reach out to you for help with how to... Or probably most of the public is better at this kind of stuff than I am, but thank you very much. I will take you up on that.
Counselor Scott.
I promise, this is my last question. So, having gone through, gotten all the way through to the end of the columns, you can tell, I'm really excited about this. So, it looks like all the quantitative data is in here, and it's going to be the project for days to go through and filter by any number of categories. I'm sure the tableau helps with a lot of those things, but some of them are a little finicky, and I could probably just do it in Excel easier. But the one thing that I guess I was kind of looking for, and I know, Director, you mentioned this at some point, the open form responses, those aren't in here. Is that because of a concern about identifying information? Cool. So, is the plan then to scrub those for potential identifying information and release as much of that as possible at some point?
Through the chair. Thank you for the question. So, it is current Somerstat policy to not release open text fields as a general rule, because people do provide a kind of personal information in them, and scrubbing them requires a level of professional judgment that I would have to execute, that would just take a very long time. That said, we do offer comment coding upon request. So, we did, we did, Liz, did extensive comment coding of the comments. The problem with releasing comment coding is that they depend on the research question. So, we would have to release many, many more columns in the data set. So, what we offer as a kind of compromise is that, upon request, if you have a research question that requires comment coding, we will provide comment coding in additional columns.
That is amazing, and... That is amazing and actually very much appreciated because that's, having at least y'all going through with consistent coding of those results is going to give an answer that might be harder to pull out if I was just looking at a giant field of text boxes. So I really appreciate that. Yeah, no, so I think, once again, I think this is going to be a treasure trove for public researchers, for folks in the public who, to dive into this set. I've got some questions myself, just looking at the numbers of suggestions. You know, I appreciated the breakout and I think similar to my colleague here, I've got a lot of questions that are raised by, you know, the very similar numbers of people that said, increase police presence and abolish the police. So in figuring out how those respondents broke out by various demographics, I think is going to very much help inform my thinking on the issues as we go forward. So compliments once again and thank you for that about the comment coding.
Counsel Wilson.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to really quickly convey my gratitude to you all for this work. I've been looking forward to seeing this for a while and it's, yeah, it is a treasure trove of data. I'm looking forward to, you know, getting my hands dirty playing around in it. Yeah, it's fascinating and it's, yeah, let's hope something really good comes out of this. Thanks.
This item is placed on file. Thank you so much, our RSJ team and Somerset for being here tonight. All right. Colleagues, can we take another five-minute recess, please?
Madam President, while we still have RSJ with us, I believe the next item on the agenda also related to RSJ.
Good question. Counselor, the next item is going to be sent to the Confirmation of Appointments Personnel Matters Committee to be discussed at our committee of the whole meeting next week. We'll have the consultants here to present on that item.
Ah, okay, but there's no materials attached to the item tonight?
Not tonight.
All right.
There will be materials for next week on that agenda. All right, let's take a five-minute recess. Thank you.
We're going to get started. All right, folks. Calling this meeting back to order. We're calling this meeting back to order. All right, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam President.
This brings us back to the regular order.
Yes, indeed, it does. And that is item 4.1, an order by Counselor Strezo that the Director of Parks and Recreation discuss how inclusive playground accessibility is being considered in future playground plans and redesign projects.
Counselor Burnley would like to sign on? Would you like to sign on, Counselor Wilson? Or would you like to speak on it?
I was going to speak on it after Counselor Strezo. I don't.
Counselor Strezo had to leave, so feel free to speak on it. And then Counselor Gomez-McAd.
Thank you, Madam President. I appreciate my colleague calling attention to a really important issue. Counselors Kling and Burnley and I are working with our legislative policy analysis to see what we can do here policy-wise in conjunction with our Commission for Persons with Disabilities. And hopefully, we have something for you all in the new year. Thanks.
Counselor.
I just want to let councilors know that when I inquired about renovations to the Kennedy Playground, that meaning the lot in the front, not there's a kindergarten, they are considering universal design for that lot.
Okay. So items approved, and the council would like that to send to Housing Community Development, please. I'm excited.
Item 4.2 is an order by Counselor Kelly that the Director of Inspection Services update this council on the progress of rodent mitigation.
Counselor Kelly.
If I had an air horn, I'd blow it. This will be the last meeting I chair of the Rodent Issues Committee, come one, come all. We'll get an update on how the fall went. I have not been touched by a rat this quarter, so I'm still waiting. But we'll be discussing this in committee. And in my retirement, I will be selling rat-oriented shirts. So check out my Etsy later down the line.
Counselor Wilson. Oh, you want to sign on? Counselor Wilson wants to sign on. And so does Counselor McLaughlin and Counselor Kling.
And who's the last one?
Counselor Kling. So items approved and sent to the Rodent Committee.
And item 4.3 is an order by Councilors Wilson and Klingon that the Director of Infrastructure and Asset Management conduct an audit of all city-owned properties in the assessors' database and report back to this council with a full list.
Counselor Wilson.
Thank you, Madam President. The genesis of this order was a conversation I had with Counselor Klingon about the discovery of a building owned by the City of Somerville that hadn't been in any of the reports that had been received previously. I'm sure Counselor Klingon can tell you all about that. With all the talk of disposition strategies for city-owned properties, I figured it makes a lot of sense to first know exactly what we do own. So I'm asking Infrastructure and Asset Management to do that. Thanks.
Counselor Klingon.
Thank you, Madam President. Through you. Yeah, as Counselor Wilson said. Well, this is also sort of germane to the conversation around Gilman Square, which one of the things the administration said was that they're doing a disposition study on three properties, one being 24 Cross Street, one being the church near Davis Square, and the other being the Home and Site. And that they don't want to, they want to make sure that they don't dispose of any assets until they know what they have. And so to Counselor Wilson's point, when I was inquiring about maybe putting a boxing gym in the building on Skilton Street by Ed Leathers Park, I alerted the city's Director of Asset Management about this particular site and whether I wanted to ask him about the, what's it called? The veracity of the structure of the building, if it was sound. And he didn't even know that we owned the building. So that's one of those cases where, you know, maybe we'll find some other properties. So then we can, we can free up some of those other things, like the Home and Site, to, in case there is an emergency that we need to put stuff somewhere other than snow. Thank you.
All right. Would you like to go to committee, councilors? Counselor Wilson, would you like to go to committee?
Housing Community Development.
Yes, you want to report?
Yes, Madam President. We'd like a committee. We're hearing Housing and Community Development. Sounds reasonable to me.
So items approved and copied sent to Housing Community Development.
I'm going to have to report.
Item 4.4 is a communication by Counselor Ewan Campin in his capacity as president canceling the regular meeting of this council scheduled for December 28, 2023.
This item is placed on file with the entire council signing on.
Yeah, but okay. Item 6A is a report of the Committee on Finance, meeting on November 14, 2023.
Counselor Wilson.
Thank you, Madam President. The Finance Committee met last Tuesday, tackling the 23-item agenda in just 59 minutes with four or five members present due to a competing legislative matters meeting. Since we averaged under three minutes per item, the straightforward nature of that meeting's agenda should be fairly self-evident, given our committee's typical zeal for digging in on requests that come before us. In fact, there were no questions on 13 of the items after the explanations from the administration or city staff about those. Our recommendations to approve the items on Tuesday night reflected in Clerk Potier's stellar minutes that I'm sure everyone has read already. Just very quickly, a few things I want to flag for folks. OSBCD can use to work on an overall strategy for e-blue bikes that we're hopeful to see implemented here in 2024. Our DPW is using sensor technology to analyze road conditions with regard to snow removal. We're now north of $2 million in legal fees paid to the firm handling the litigation over the 90 Washington Pro Tonto. We are projected to have around $32.8 million in free cash this year, with certification by the Department of Revenue close to happening. Our new gross certification of $17.5 million was around $2.5 million over our estimate. That surplus has been exhausted, or will be tonight, with the supplemental appropriations recommended for approval by you all this evening and already approved in recent meetings. Two of those supplemental appropriations are for work relocating the Winter Hill Community Innovation School to the Edgerly. There are two items, because some of those costs were borne by the school department and some were borne by DPW on the city side. Thanks to the quick actions of folks in our school department IT, that ransomware attack against SPS back at the start of the school year was ultimately unsuccessful. No ransom was demanded or paid. So that's good news. The roughly $2.5 million appropriation from parking meter receipts, basically, that's what we already voted on this past June as part of the FY '24 budget, in case anyone's wondering about that. Finally, the work that will be done to repair the clock tower above us is work that would need to be done as part of any future city hall renovations, anyway. So we're just accelerating that work in light of the damaged clock that we all know about. With that, I ask that you accept this committee report as submitted. Thanks.
I believe we have some roll call votes tonight.
Yes, with the approval of that committee report, there are two items before the council for a roll call vote. We can take them both up together. They are 23-1516, approval to appropriate $56,215.42 from the Bike Share Stabilization Fund for installation and startup cost of a blue bike station at the 74 Middlesex Avenue development site, and item 23-1655, appropriating $165,687 from the Energy Stabilization Fund to pay for the final phase of the LED conversion project at the Argenziano School. On both of those items, Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Strezo. Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Wilson.
Yes.
Counselor Burnley.
Aye.
Counselor Gomez-McAd.
Yes.
Counselor Kelly.
Yes.
Counselor Pineda-Nufeld.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campin. With nine councilors in favor, none opposed, and two absent, those items are approved. And that will bring us to the next item, which is item 6C, a report of the Committee on Land Use, meeting on November 16, 2023.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Thank you, Madam President. Let's start this meeting. So we had a very, very good land use committee meeting. All members of the committee were present. All votes were unanimous. There were three very important votes that shall go down right now. And all of these will make us compliant with the MBTA Communities Act, which, for people who know, requires dense housing by transit, something that I've advocated for and other people on this council have. And this will get us in compliance with that, so we have no issues with the state. The first referred for recommendation was an ordainment of an amendment to the zoning court to repeal Section 10.9, which is known as the steep slope amendment. Director Dan Bartman was there. He said that the amendment is actually a change. The amendment that we have is a change in oversight and will be removing the special permit currently required from the zoning commission in place in slope regulation into an existing permit called the site construction permit, which will be administered by the Engineering Division. Counselor Ewan Campin expressed support for this amendment and noted that the steep slope amendment was passed in the first place to address one narrow situation and that it makes more sense for slope consideration to be placed in the administrative part of the process rather than zoning itself. This item passed 5 to 0. The next item we had is request an ordainment of the amendment to the Somerville Zoning Court of Ordinances to repeal Section 9.1.11, residents' use categories, aka the no more than four regulation, which prohibited no more than four unrelated people from living with each other. Everyone spoke highly positively of repealing this for the reasons that have been discussed in committee before. And myself, I asked which safeguards are in place to prevent overcrowding if the amendment is passed. Planner Graminsky explained that state law governs the building and sanitation codes, which would regulate square footage requirements, which is more effective and equitable way of addressing overcrowding. This item passed 5 to nothing. And then finally, we had a request an ordainment of the amendment to the Somerville Zoning Court for neighborhood residences and urban residences. This item in particular will allow a third unit as of right and allow triple deckers to be built as of right throughout the city. Director Dan Bartman continued that this amendment permit, this amendment permits triple deckers as of right with no preconditions. It would only permit a fourth unit on these lots if said fourth unit is a backyard cottage that fits in the lot setback. Counselor Davis asked whether these changes would result in the open space in the form of backyards. And Director Bartman explained that it would not, it would not, because I'm reading too fast. I apologize. It would not because the majority of the lots in Somerville have already residential buildings on them and that, as a result, most backyards are already in space. Director Bartman continued that this amendment would also not repeal any open space requirements and green score requirements. Counselor Gomez-McAd commented that the amendment would not change the architectural character of the city and may provide for additional green opportunities, such as new construction with flat roofs capable of supporting solar heat pumps. Counselor Ewan Campin expressed strong support for this amendment and commented that based on the evidence of past several years, approving it would unlikely result in fewer affordable units or cause an increase in population density. And Counselor Wilson stated that although there's a concern for removing the affordable third-unit requirement in buildings during the past four years, this requirement has been in effect, zero of those units have been constructed. And myself, I expressed strong support for the amendment and noted the historical opposition to the third unit as of right. This item in particular held the zoning process up for years, and we now have an opportunity to equitably distribute housing density throughout the city. I also noted that if neighboring communities adopt similar changes along the MBTA Communities Act, more overall units will be developed, which could have a positive impact on pricing in the region. This item was also approved 5 to nothing. And finally, we had an item dealing with vegetated roofs that remained in committee. Council is still have questions, so we will take that up in our final land use committee of the year. So I submit this committee report to be accepted as submitted.
Exciting stuff. Counselor McLaughlin. I think with that, we have some enrollments and ordainments.
Yes, with the approval of that committee report, there are three items before the council for enrollment and ordainment. The first is item 23-1198. This is an amendment to Section 3.1 and 3.2 to permit the house and triple-decker building types without any conditions. On enrollment, Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Strezo. Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Wilson.
Yes.
Counselor Burnley.
Aye.
Counselor Gomez-McAd.
Yes.
Counselor Kelly.
Yes.
Counselor Pineda-Nufeld.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campin. With nine councilors in favor, none opposed, and two absent, that item is enrolled. And on ordainment, Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Strezo. Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Wilson.
Yes.
Counselor Burnley.
Aye.
Counselor Gomez-McAd.
Yes.
Counselor Kelly.
Yes.
Counselor Pineda-Nufeld.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campin. With nine councilors in favor, none opposed, and two absent, that item is ordained. The next item before the council is item 23-1205, an amendment to the zoning ordinances to repeal Section 10.9, steep slopes. On enrollment, Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Strezo. Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Wilson.
Yes.
Counselor Burnley.
Aye.
Counselor Gomez-McAd.
Yes.
Counselor Kelly.
Yes.
Counselor Pineda-Nufeld.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campin. With nine councilors in favor, none opposed, and two absent, that item is enrolled. And on ordainment, Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Strezo. Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Wilson.
Yes.
Counselor Burnley.
Aye.
Counselor Gomez-McAd.
Yes.
Counselor Kelly.
Yes.
Counselor Pineda-Nufeld.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campin. With nine councilors in favor, none opposed, and two absent, that item is ordained. And finally, item 23-1489, amending Section 9 and Table 9.11 to replace the two residential use categories. On enrollment, Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Strezo. Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Wilson.
Yes.
Counselor Burnley.
Aye.
Counselor Gomez-McAd.
Yes.
Counselor Kelly.
Yes.
Counselor Pineda-Nufeld.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campin. With nine councilors in favor, none opposed, and two absent, that item is enrolled. And on ordainment, Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Strezo. Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Wilson.
Yes.
Counselor Burnley.
Aye.
Counselor Gomez-McAd.
Yes.
Counselor Kelly.
Yes.
Counselor Pineda-Nufeld.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campin. With nine councilors in favor, none opposed, and two absent, that item is ordained. And that will bring us to the next item before the council, which is item 6D, a report of the Committee on Legislative Matters, meeting on November 14, 2023.
Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Madam President. Keep this very brief. We've essentially discussed one topic, that is the proposed home rule petition for rent stabilization that was submitted by the Anti-Displacement Task Force recently, along with the related item that President Ewan Campin had submitted back previously that led to that initial discussion and creation of the task force. The minutes are detailed. There was no action taken because there was a number of questions raised that we just wanted to seek input and responses from the administration. And I'll note, I also just had a bunch of drafting questions and clarifications that I didn't want to take up committee time on. So I have had a long conversation with the administration since this past meeting. And we will, the item was, both items were kept in committee. We will be taking it up again a week from tonight and potentially taking action on it at that meeting. So tune in next Tuesday if you want more. With that, I move, request that the report be accepted as submitted.
Any questions on the committee report? All right, the item's approved. Next item.
Item 6E is a report of the Committee on Licenses and Permits, meeting on November 15, 2023.
Counselor Burnley.
Thank you, through the chair. Amazing meeting, very quick meeting. We met, and we were done in 14 minutes on four items, three of which were all for the same applicant. And that's all I got to say about that, to be honest. I ask that this report be accepted as submitted.
Questions on the committee report? Okay, that's approved. Next item.
Item 6F is a report of the Committee on Open Space Environment and Energy, meeting on November 20, 2023.
Counselor Burnley.
Thank you, through the chair. I'll be summarily brief. We met. Four members were present. We met for 17 minutes, I believe, trying to be very fast at the end of this year. We discussed several items, but no action was taken on any item. We will come back to discuss a number of important things, including improvements to the community path extension, invasive species, ZAR, hopefully, in the next budget, as well as a number of other items that are of great import to our constituents. And with that, I would ask that this report be accepted as submitted.
Any questions on our report? Okay, item's approved. Next item.
Item 6G is a report of the Committee on Public Utilities and Public Works, meeting on November 13, 2023.
Counselor Klingon.
Thank you, Madam President. Through you, we met on Monday, November 13. All members were in attendance. I'm sorry, with the exception that Counselor Gomez-McAd was replaced that evening by Counselor Wilson. She had a family engagement, and so we did a little switch-hitting. Mostly a lot of housekeeping, kept a few things in committee that they weren't able to discuss yet, mainly the fire, I'm sorry, the 1895 building items. There were two things of note that I would discuss quickly. One was regarding the Highland Ave pavement, One was regarding the Highland Ave pavement, mainly because I think we're all still confused as to when the Highland Ave paving can happen. And that came out in the form of actually Counselor Davis's order that the administration report to this council on the ability to require further repairs on Highland Ave, and if none, an explanation on whether that complies with road engineering regulations. Ladies and gentlemen, said the attachment titled Highland Pavement explains why pavement cannot happen sooner than 2024, and that Counselor Davis had told her the intent of the item was to ensure that the road will be in better condition by winter, which Director Postaway had confirmed. Chair Klingon asked if utility companies could cover the cost of the short-term repaving. This led to a discussion about what utility companies are obligated to do. There's a whole freeze-thaw cycle, and basically Counselor Kelly reviewed the memo and asked the timeline basically about the different projects on Highland. Director Raich said that his understanding was that the gas work will be completed in June 2024, after which another phase of sewer separation will start. And Counselor Kelly requested an updated memo with more clarity around the timeline. So again, it's still very cloudy as to when we'll see even just the sort of not temporary pavement, but the paving of Highland Ave that's not the whole redesign with the bike lanes and such. Believe it or not, we didn't, it's still unclear. The other thing of note that we discussed was Counselor Wilson and Pineda Newfeld's order around infrastructure asset management, updating the council on the sewer separation work and any opportunities prioritizing problematic areas. This was based on the presentation that the director gave a year and a half ago about sort of the sequencing of the work that's going to be done. And it led to questions from residents about areas that maybe weren't mentioned, that should be plugged in, or maybe were mentioned in that report, but were, you know, were wondering about if prioritization could be shifted a little bit, and maybe there's some wiggle room for an area that, you know, was further down on the line to be addressed sooner. Because mainly, this is probably all coming about because of the superstorms that we've been having, and some of the folks in different areas that have been experiencing extreme water events like Murdoch Street, I believe, is one of the really bad areas. So yeah, Counselor Wilson submitted that because of a series of conversations with residents on Murdoch Street who have been having overflow issues. Director Raich gave a presentation about the sewer separation prioritization. The presentation summarized several earlier presentations and shared links to other resources, as well as listing in current in-flight projects. Director Raich said that the third public meeting on the CSO control plan will be hosted virtually by the city of Somerville, the city of Cambridge, and the MWRA on Wednesday, November 15th at 6:00 PM. I don't know if any, I wasn't able to attend that, but he said he will, that it will be important to have Somerville voiced at the meeting. So out of the presentation, Director Raich, well, I don't know, maybe Counselor Wilson can speak to it. It's not here in the notes, but I think the takeaway was that the order was, the order was what it was. Is that, is that what, or did, I'll let my colleague answer this one.
Counselor Wilson?
Thank you, Madam President. I mean, my general takeaway was there's a sequencing that needs to happen for very, very real reasons, and that, you know, obviously, they'll, they'll look to do whatever they can, you know, should the opportunity arise, but the, you know, the order is the order, basically. In relation to Murdoch, Director Raich did speak specifically about some, some work on Morrison that needs to happen first before that situation can be dealt with, too. So yeah, I think that's a fair, that's a fair assessment.
Counselor Kelly?
Thank you, Chair. I just, to emphasize Counselor Klingon's point, I do think there is confusion about why 2026 for the total repaving and street redesign of Highland Ave is still happening. From my understanding of the timeline, there is a bunch of utility work that will be complete in the spring and summer. I mean, work, of course, always gets delayed, but even if it got delayed till the fall, that's still calendar year 2024, not calendar year 2026. So, you know, the memo that was provided cited the CIP as a reason why 2026 is why the, why the road will be fixed. But the CIP is made by people, not by an algorithm, so we can change the CIP at whatever point in time we want to. So I will just encourage residents to keep advocating for Highland Ave to be fixed, because the road, it needs fixing.
Counselor Davis, I saw your hand up. Did you want to speak on this?
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. Since we're still on Highland Ave, I guess I'll say a brief note. Just to clarify that, when the President of Union Camp and raised this issue initially, and then my subsequent motion, there was, there was, I think, some, at least on my part, some confusion that, at the premise or the suggestion that Highland Ave in its state at that moment, that we were sitting here, was going to be the way it was left. And I asked that question, and was told, yes, that's the way it's going to be left. Clearly, that wasn't the case, because it has, work has continued, and it doesn't look anything like it did back then. It's terrible in different ways. But many of the most concerning things actually have been fixed. There's some of the biggest holes that were there that night aren't there anymore, so that's good. I presume it's probably because the folks, which likely would have done without me or any of us suggesting that they do it, you know, ensure that the utility companies go back and do, and, you know, go through their process of doing the preliminary patching and whatever they can. So thankfully, I think it's a lot better than it was. And, and so that was my, that was my request, and I did have a conversation, a follow-up with the, with the administration on that, to clarify that it was just like, hey, look, let's make sure they're doing everything they can do. And it seems that they, in fact, have been doing more since that point, so that's good. I do understand that, you know, we are limited by our contracts, and we are always frustrated by the state that they leave things, because they do have this freeze-thaw issue, and they have to let things settle and everything. But at least it's not quite as bad as it was the night that we were talking about it the first time. That's the one small victory.
Counselor Scott, then Counselor Gomez-Mocad, then Counselor Wilson.
Thank you. I just appreciated my colleague at large's comments, and I just wanted to make it very clear for anybody in the public that I believe when, it is true, the capital improvement plan is made by humans, but when it says, when she says "we" can change it, "we" as city councillors can't change it. There is one person, "we," in the royal "we" of our mayor, can change it, because the mayor is the sole source for the capital improvement plan. So I just want to make it very clear, and would continue to echo the calls for advocacy to make the world we want to see. Thank you.
Counselor Gomez-Mocad.
Can I get a little clarification on when, when they, through you, to Counselor Klingon, was it stated that there wouldn't be construction on Highland Ave until FY, until 2026? Or the design wouldn't start until 2026?
To my recollection, again, I walked away, there was, there was, there was a memo that was attached that had a lot of different dates on it, a lot of different years. And, you know, the best I could discern, taken away from the, the thing was, from the discussion in general, was that, you know, because Counselor Kelly asked some very specific questions about, okay, so if you start the work in late 2024, but we can't start it then because we have to do a freeze-thaw freeze, and then, yeah, I don't, honestly don't have a good answer for, for when the utility work is actually going to be done, and when we're going to have a redesigned Highland Ave. I think, you know, what started all this was the question by Counselor Ewan Campen as to whether or not, I mean, I mean, the order by Ewan Campen that he wanted to have the road paved pretty much, you know, right away. And then, as Counselor Davis stated, there has been a lot of different, there's been patchwork, and we have been pushing the utility companies to do, you know, do good patch jobs when they can. So it's been sort of, it's still very bad condition, but, but that's ultimately like what my takeaway was. I'm not sure if that work's going to start in 2025 or '06. Counselor Kelly?
Just to answer, through the president, through the chair, so the answer that we were given is there is combined sewer separation work that needs, the separation of the sewer and water has to happen. That is part of the city side of the utilities that's getting done. The city was also notified very recently in the memo that the gas lines on Highland Ave have to be replaced. So that is not any of the construction that is currently going on between school and walnut right now, right? Like, that is city-side utility work. What the administration told us in the Public Utility, Public Works meeting is that work is still continuing, and in addition to that, Eversource has gas utility work to get done. So the timeline that we were given in committee, and I do think we need that in writing, because it was murky at times, I think we were all trying to parse through what exactly this timeline meant, because there was a, as Counselor Klingon denoted, a freeze-and-thaw period. My assumption is that has to do with the water in the sewer side, not the gas side. That'd be kind of crazy if we were freezing and thawing gas, but I'm not a scientist. But both of those utility projects have to be completed in order for the repaving of the road to be done. Whether or not the, I mean, again, not a civil engineer, are they designing the repavements and the redesign of Highland Ave right now? I'm seeing some head nods. I'm seeing some head no's. So I think the Public Utility and Public Works Committee has another committee meeting in December. I would request that we get an, just a timeline document submitted to the committee. The memo was helpful, but it wasn't super clear. But basically, there's those two different utility projects that have to be completed, if I am remembering my line of questioning to Director Raich. I'm trying to go back to that night.
Counselor Wilson, and then Counselor Gomez-Mocad.
Thanks, Madam President. I think I can shed a little light on this. I want to start in like the immediate, the short, and the long term here. Immediately, you all have noticed, it got a little bit better on a certain stretch of Highland Ave. I think Counselor Davis referred to that. I have, I have it on good authority here from our construction liaison and compliance manager. They shimmied the trench. If that means anything to anyone, you're farther ahead of me, but that's why it got a little smoother on that stretch about halfway down westbound on Highland Ave, halfway between school and Sycamore. Short term, yes, as Counselor Kelly laid out, they have to do some work under the road, the water and sewer work, and then the Eversource gas work. At that point, then, Highland Ave should be repaved, and that is independent from then the Highland Ave redesign project that is currently scheduled to have, to restart fall of 2026. So we'll see when the actual repaving happens. That's going to be contingent on when the utility work happens under the, under the road, but it's not tied to the Highland Ave redesign project. Those are two independent things right now, just to be clear about that.
Counselor Gomez-Mocad.
I would recommend my colleagues get clarification on the timeline for the whole redesign slash construction start for Highland, because it seems unclear. If you're telling me you're not starting till FY 2026, if that's design, you're not going to get that road till FY '28. So I really recommend that you, and this is something, if the Director of Government Affairs is listening to me, before I start screaming at the screen at home in the future, I really encourage, because I can see my fellow councillors are extremely confused here, because there's repaving, and then there's a design. And I know that this, the constituents are very concerned about the redesign, and also the paving. So I think we need to, when we are, the council, this is a recommendation, when councillors spoken to, we need a clear, like, just even if it varies, just a chart, okay, we repaved, this is what's happening, and then this is the design process, including if an RFP has to go out, you know, I think it would help us communicate with constituents who get really frustrated with not knowing when things happen, and when we don't provide information, our constituents expect the worst. So I am urging this, that we, we do this, and you can tell by the confusion, we don't, we think we're going to pave, we don't know, like, this entire council doesn't know what is happening, because they haven't been given clear information. So I just put that request, because if you don't ask for this in the future, I'm going to be screaming at the screen at you guys. So just my parting words on this. Thank you.
Counselor Klingon.
Just, well, just to finish off their, well, through you, Madam President, I will say, I think that confusion is somewhat by design. I don't think there really is a clear answer. You know, so basically, it's kind of wait-and-see type of thing, but I hear you, and I think, you know, we should put some, I will put something in, and Counselor Kelly had asked for a memo outlining the timeline, so, but absolutely appreciate and agree with what you're saying, and, you know, I think we're all feeling the pain of Highland Ave, so it's something that's going to continue to be on the top of all of our radars. So thank you. And with that, I will just bring up one more item.
Counselor Klingon, it looks like Director Singh would like to speak on this, so, okay.
Through the chair, thank you for the questions here. I just wanted to highlight that on our city's website, we have a page dedicated to Highland Ave redesign that includes a lot of the details and answers some of the questions that were brought up tonight. It also includes an FAQ page. I'd be happy to share it with the members of the council, and also take away any questions that you have that are not answered in that document, back to the team. Thank you.
Counselor Kelly?
Through the chair, yeah, I think the, the thing that we need, which was requested in the November 13th Public Utility and Public Works meeting, is just a one-page, the timeline, like, utility work on the city side being done these months, estimate, estimate, right? Utility work from Eversource being done, an estimate, the repaving estimate, the master redesign estimate, as a timeline. You know, I'm on, on the website right now, already lost. I'm not going to lie, I'm already lost. So that is what constituents are asking for, is just like, when are these things going to happen? And that was the conversation that we had in committee. So if we can have that for the Public Utility and Public Works meeting that's coming up in December, that would be fabulous.
Counselor Wilson?
Thank you, Madam President, and I'll just add, we really do not need to wait to start the public process on the Highland Ave redesign project. We'll be wasting time if we wait for all of this to happen before we start that process. Start the process, please.
Okay, back to you, Counselor Klingon.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President, through you, and I will note that, like, there's some sort of timeline that says spring of 2023, that, you know, oh, the five-year capital investment plan, so, yeah. I don't think even the, the public even understand, like, necessarily knows what that, that is. I think it really, just a basic timeline would be helpful for everybody. The last thing I will mention, because I think it's important, because it's been an issue for all of us, was the order put in by, where'd it go? I believe it was Counselor Burnley.
Yeah.
Counselor Burnley, the Commissioner of Public Works appear for this council, discuss actions have, can be taken to ensure trash and recycling barrels do not obstruct sidewalks after pickup. So going into the meeting, I actually talked to a parent who has a child with a disability, and she said she's noticed a marked difference since, there has been multiple meetings with Boston Carding. It's not, it's, it's a work in progress, it's not perfect. These guys are throwing trash all day in the worst conditions, you know, getting them to put the barrels back just so is difficult. I think, you know, I mentioned that we all, as a community, need to pitch it, it has to do with the homeowner or renters or whoever, like, getting the barrels in as soon as possible, if they can. I mean, if they're at work, obviously not, but, but point being, this is something that we all need to work together on, but definitely, the city has addressed it with Boston Carding, and it's definitely improved in some areas. It just depends on the route and the guys, and how responsive they are. So we'll continue to, to stay on top of Boston Carding. And with that, I ask that this report be accepted as submitted. Thank you.
Counselor Burnley?
Just really briefly, through the chair, and toward my calling for a word for, thank you, thank the administration, especially Director Lathan. This is an accessibility issue. Every day, for my street, this is trash day tonight, I got to take out my barrels, and I very much hope that my street's not going to look like a mess tomorrow, because it often has, and it has often caused consternation from my neighbors and from folks who have to maneuver into the street in order to just go about their day. Let's move forward in a way that actually allows us to move safely throughout our city. Thank you.
All right, this item is approved.
The next item is item 7.1.
Counselor Wilson?
Yeah, Madam President, I'd like to move to waive the readings of items 7.1 to 7.3, 7.5 to 7.7, and 10.9 to 10.15, and ask those be sent to Finance. Thanks.
Got it. Next item, Madam Clerk.
So the next item is item 8.2, an officer's communication from the Director of the Department of Racial and Social Justice conveying the police department's staffing and operations analysis.
Counselor Kelly?
Through the chair, I would just request that, similar to the data that we received tonight, on a very large study, that we similarly get this data several days in advance. We got the PowerPoint for this, I think, Thursday or Friday of last week, which helped being able to review a 64-page slide. So making sure we get this data not an hour, not a day, not 36 hours in advance, but like at least three days, so that we can review it will be very helpful.
Noted. This item is placed on file with a copy sent to confirmation of appointments, personnel matters, which will be discussed next week on the 30th at our Committee of the Whole meeting. Next item.
Item 8.3 is an officer's communication from the city clerk conveying the non-binding votes of the 2024 City Council caucus.
City clerk.
Thank you, Madam President. The 2024 City Council meeting and caucus this evening at 6:30 PM expressed their preference for President Counselor Ewan Campen, and for Vice President Counselor Pineda Newfeld. As a reminder, this is a non-binding vote.
Okay, this item is placed on file. Next item.
Item 9.1 is a new garage license for Greentown Labs for five cars inside and zero outside for storing vehicles.
Counselor Burnley?
Thank you. I'd like to ask that this item be sent to licenses and permits, and I would like to waive the readings of items 9.2 through 9.8, and just give a little bit of a spiel about what we're talking about here. We have some wonderful events coming around this wintry season. We have, in fact, a holiday stroll put on by the Union Square Main Streets in conjunction with 30-plus local businesses. This will be a wonderful time for you to go down with your families, as this is a free, family-friendly, and festive event, where you can participate in a number of events, including a holiday stroll, where if you go to participating businesses and collect stamps, you can have the opportunity to win $100 just by patronizing your local businesses. Additionally, there is a Elfie selfie event that they will also be putting on for, at quote-unquote Festivus Village. And if you take a selfie with an Elfie and you @UnionSquareMainStreets online with the hash, with the hashtag, I think it's love@UnionSquareMainStreets, you also will have an opportunity to win $100. So please do not miss out on this opportunity to pad your holiday pockets. In that same spirit, there is, on the fourth day of, the fourth night of Hanukkah, there will be a menorah lighting put on by the mayor's office at 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM, and that will be a wonderful event that you can take part in. Well, this says 4:00 PM. It should be, I didn't write it, okay? 4:00 PM, according to the event, in front of, the paper in front of me, to 7:00 PM. And there will also be a tree lighting on December 7th, a few days prior, where there will be a Santa with cookies, hot chocolate, and coffee, as well as some gifts. So with that, I would ask that these items be approved.
Okay, and Madam Clerk, why don't we waive the readings of 9.9, 9.10, and place them on file?
So the next item is item 10.1, an order by councillors Gomez-Mocad and Wilson, that the Director of Infrastructure and Asset Management deliver a study showing the steps to decarbonize mechanical systems in existing school buildings as part of the HVAC feasibility study, and assess potential grants and funding to help accelerate this process.
Counselor Gomez-Mocad?
Can you read the next one, and I'll put them all together?
Item 10.2 is an order by councillors Gomez-Mocad and Wilson, that the Director of Infrastructure and Asset Management provide a list of schools that do not have solar panels, and a plan, including potential grant and funding sources, to install solar panels in those buildings, following any roof repairs and replacements.
Counselor Gomez-Mocad?
So I put these, I promised myself I wouldn't put any more orders in last term, but famous last words. So recently, I've been, I'm part of a group of parents who are Somerville Carbon-Free and Healthy Schools advocacy group, where they've expressed an interest and desire for fossil-fuel-free buildings and improving the greening of our schools. I made them aware, that's through the specialized stretch code, and hopefully, the adoption of a fossil-fuel-free ordinance, our new buildings would be addressing a lot of their concerns. But the question came up of, how are we addressing existing buildings? So I would like these refer to the School Building Committee to discuss. I know we're in the process of doing a study on our heating, ventilation, and air conditioning HVAC systems for the Healy and the West, upon consulting one of our engineers. It is feasible to do this, you know, I don't, I don't expect to be a professional, but it's something we should have a discussion, especially when we recently had a gas leak in the West building, but just to be clear, has nothing to do with our systems, it's one of the old labs, some student turned on a valve. Obviously, we should get rid of that, if we're not using that lab accordingly. Then the other one is, this one, this order in part is dedicated to my dear son Marco, who, when I first started, said, mother, the, mom, whatever, mama, whatever he calls me. He's like, the only solar panel in the Kennedy School is a trash can. And I had said, well, why don't you write, you know, put a proposal or anything? And, and again, as parents have talked about pulling solar panels, I think this is a no-brainer. Obviously, I have put there, in my building knowledge, that of course, we want to repair the roofs before we put any solar panels there. So I just want to put it there, put it, folks on their radar screens, as my last orders on school buildings, I promise. So if we can refer this to the School Building Committee, I already have them for the agenda, so they're on their way. Thank you.
All right, this item is approved, with a copy sent to the School Buildings Committee.
And item 10.3 is a resolution by Counselor Gomez-Mocad, that the administration immediately engage in contract negotiations with the SMEA Unit B due to increasing losses of staff due to low wages.
So we all got the email that SMEA has lost staff, especially, like, in the last week, they lost about five staff. It's a recurring issue, we all have a lot of open positions. I am concerned as a councillor and as a resident, if we lose the staff, we absolutely will be in a precarious situation in the operations. If we lose the staff, we absolutely will be in a precarious situation in the operations of our city. And I understand this is a national crisis nationwide, and a lot of support services. I worked at a hospital, we have similar issues. But I think what COVID has taught us is that these are—a lot of these positions are underappreciated, undervalued, and we want the folks that work here to make a living wage and be able to live here. The better you know your city, the better you're going to be able to serve your city. So I think this is an urgent item. I know—I put this too, because I had put—in October, I had put an order in asking for the compensation study. I hear it's coming, but I just want to explain that this is an urgent item. Based on my professional background, what I do, I—you know, I operate in large institutions, understand the importance of support services. I am very, very, very concerned about this. And I also want to send a message to our SMEA Unit B that we do value, we do care for you. We can't do a lot of the things as councillor without them. How many times do we get 311? We have—I think our dear councillor McLaughlin has some items that would be addressed by some of our SMEA staff. So I hope the administration takes this to heart and really makes whatever—I know there are efforts out there, but I'm asking for 100% efforts to move these negotiations forward. In a dream of worlds, did what happened before the end of the year, but a councillor can only dream. Thank you.
Councillor Scott?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to express my support, also happy to sign on to this item, and point out that wants—to lift up that this can be done. We don't have to wait for a study. We've been waiting a very long time for a study. And I'd also like to highlight that this is now the second month in a row that the city has come to the City Council with a settled contract for one of the city's unions. So obviously, some unions are having conversations with the mayor's office. I certainly applaud this call to add SMEA Unit B to that list. Thank you.
Councillors Burnley, Wilson, Strezzo, and myself would like to sign on. The whole council would like to sign on. All right, this item's approved.
Item 10.4 is in order by councillor McLaughlin, that the Director of Health and Human Services provide the Ward 1 City Councillor with monthly updates on efforts to address homelessness in East Summerville.
Councillor McLaughlin?
Thank you, Madam President. As I mentioned earlier, we unfortunately lost a life in East Summerville, a homeless resident, and this is not new. This is a years-long thing. I think a lot of people became aware of the homelessness issue in the last few months, but this is not the first body I've had to deal with in East Summerville. And this one is literally close to home for me, because it's right down the street from my house. I would see this encampment on the street for about a week, right before the person passed away. And we've had several public health and safety meetings about this. I'd say the last two, I've just asked the city directly, what specifically is being done in East Summerville to address this very on-the-ground issue? And I encourage people to watch the videos, because maybe I interpret things differently, but my interpretation was a laundry list of resources. But then I picked apart each resource and said, "These are not going to East Summerville." So I'm asking you specifically, what is going on here? And I kind of realized, I think, between meetings, that we're speaking very different languages. The city prides itself on being very data-oriented, whereas I'm a very on-the-ground person, and that's not to say data is not important, but I'm dealing with things on the ground, and I want to know how those resources are getting to East Summerville specifically. So this is a request for data, basically. I am asking for very specific information about outreach attempts. How many contacts do outreach groups have with homeless populations? What are the number of complaints? What are the number of issues? What are the number of resources allocated? So if we can break it down to math, and maybe that would make it—at the very least, it's going to make the disparity a lot more visible. But hopefully, we get to a point where these numbers satisfy me and those numbers equate to helping people and saving their lives. So I'd like this, of course, to be go to public health and safety.
这件是 approved with a copy sent to public health and public safety.
Item 10.5 is in order by councillor McLaughlin, that the Director of Engineering add signage to streets that intersect with Gilman Street, indicating that the street allows two-way bicycle traffic.
Councillor McLaughlin?
Thank you, Madam President. So I had a great meeting this weekend to discuss neighborways efforts on Otis Street and Glenn Street, which are traffic calm and pedestrian bike safety measures. A lot of residents from the Winter Hill School came to this meeting, and they use the Gilman Street underpass, which is something I've advocated for. At the very last meeting, I told people that this underpass is the safest, and in my mind, coolest way to get from East Summerville without crossing McGrath Highway. And they brought up issues like this, about how can we have—it's a two-way—bikes can go two ways on this street, but it's a one-way street for cars. So to let cars know that this is a two-way street for bikes, so people on bikes don't get hit, and also just traffic calming in general, that's what this is. And I just mark this one to be approved.
And Councillor Wilson would like to sign on. 这件是 approved, next item.
Item 10.6 is in order by councillor McLaughlin, that the Director of Engineering add a curb cut to the Walnut Street Park by Skilton Ave to create a clear path for cyclists from Walnut Street.
Yes, so I would encourage people to check out Walnut Street, Walnut and Pearl area. We have a great new two-way bike lane on that street, as well as a very elaborate curb cut. I asked for a curb cut like three years ago, and I got this masterpiece, basically. It took three years to get it, but all I wanted was a curb cut, and I'm very happy for that. I thank you, everybody from the city, for making that happen, because it's way better than what I would have asked for. But on the other side of the Walnut—Kemnutt Site Park site is another neighborway that I personally use and other residents use to cut parallel to Pearl Street, to stay off of Pearl. And there's just, like, they could use a curb cut, and I was told that there are no plans for this. And it's just—I'm very appreciative of what happened, but all I want is that little curb cut there. And it seems so simple to make it bike and ADA accessible on two sides of the street, connect in the neighborways from east to west Summerville. All I need is a curb cut. In lieu of that, I will take some cement and do it myself, if the city can provide me that cement. So I would just mark this to approve.
Councillor Klingon?
Thank you, Madam President, through you on this order. I just want to note that the curb cut happened once it became—in, you know, that street was put into my ward, so I just want to make—let it be known that I get things done. Also, through you, Madam President, also, I appreciate the order regarding this spot in my ward, actually, Skilton Street.
Well, why is that not done, Councillor Klingon?
Watch. I'm still stuck in the post—the pre-zoning map change, whatever.
这件是 approved. Next item.
Item 10.7 is in order by councillor McLaughlin, that the Director of Inspection Services address the rodent holes around the East Branch Library.
Motion to approve and sent to the Rodent Committee?
这件是 approved and sent to the Rodent Committee. Next item.
Item 10.8 is in order by councillor McLaughlin, that the Director of Public Space and Urban Forestry trim the tree by 11 Illinois Avenue.
Motion to approve.
这件是 approved.
10.16.
Yes, Madam Clerk, let's waive the readings of 10.16 through 10.23 and send them to confirmation of appointments, please. And let's waive the readings of 10.24 to 10.27 and place them on file.
And that brings us to the end of the agenda for the evening, Madam President.
Are there any late items?
There is one late item before the council.
Late item, okay.
An order from Councillor Klingon, that the Director of Engineering provide this council with a basic timeline for all utility work and paving projects scheduled for Highland Avenue, including in said timeline of the Highland Ave redesign project.
Councillor Klingon?
To Publicity, Public Works, please.
Okay,这件是 approved, sent to Public Utility and Public Works with the whole council signing on.
And there are no further items before the council.
All right, motion to adjourn.